This is the regular meeting of the Township of Tom's River Board of Adjustment in pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. The public is hereby notified and had to put notice as defined by the act was provided. And that notice of the meeting schedule was published in the Hasbury Park Press on December 6, 2024. Published in the Star Ledger on December 6, 2024. The copy of said notice was filed through the Township of Tom's River Council and posted by then. We will now have a roll of all the numbers.
Mr. Kristin?
Here.
Mr. Ringer?
Here.
Mr. Palucci?
Here.
Ms. Carmelman?
Yeah.
Mr. Fontanman?
Here.
Mr. Erb?
Here.
Mr. Listen?
Here.
Mr. Logman?
Here.
Um, Mr. Tattletale's not present. I'm Mr. Ricotta.
Here.
In addition, we have present tonight our board, Board Attorney Christopher Daxey, Esquire of the Wellfurner Daxey &amp; Steyer. Our Board Engineer, Arnie Peters, P.E. of Arlington &amp; Burnt Engineers Incorporated. Our Court Planner, Stuart Weiser of A.R.H. Associates. Our Assistant Secretary for Reporters, Ms. Melissa Benedetto. Our Court Reporter is Denise L. Sweet of Denise L. Sweet &amp; Associates LLC. For those of you who are here for the first time, we'll briefly outline the procedure which the Board of Adjustment has adopted. The applicant or his or her attorney will present their case. The applicant will call witnesses on his or her behalf. There will be questions by board members and questions to the witnesses by objectors related only to the witness's testimony. This procedural will be repeated with each and every witness. When asking a question regarding the witness's specific testimony, the public may only ask questions about that expert's testimony. Upon completion of the presentation by the applicant or his or her attorney, all parties who are interested may present their view. The public may comment on any aspect of the application at the public comment period at the close of the application. When speaking, speak. Uh, when speaking, please give your name, address, and your interest in the application to the Board Secretary or Board Reporter when speaking to the microphone. To avoid delay, do not repeat what any previous objector has already objected to other than to acknowledge agreement with that objector. All appeals shall be taken to the Superior Court within forty-five days to the date of publication of the decision. It is therefore very important that all objectors present tonight be heard by the Board. The Board will complete all appeals on the agenda, if at all possible, prior to ten p.m. We will now proceed with the regular scheduled meeting. Uh, the pending application tonight is Appeal Number 13893, a used D1 variance. Um, fault variance, preliminary and final major site plan, public carry open, no testimony, heard carried from November 8th, 18th, 2024, December 12th, 2024, January 23rd, 2025, March 13th, 2025, and April 10th, 2025, for further testimony. Miss Christchurch of Tom's River, 415 Washington Street, Lot 687, Lot 16. The applicant seeks used D1, preliminary, and final major site plan approval of this drug. Um, and the proposed nine hundred twenty-nine square foot homeless shelter addition with seventeen beds connected to an existing outreach office of Church of Christ. The proposed homeless shelter is now permitted in the R-150 zone. Number of parking spaces, one hundred eighty-three spaces required permitted, one hundred fifteen spaces proposed. Mr. York?
Thank you. To the right of the party of the York, no majority, the Colvis and Julie representing the applicant. At the last hearing, we had, the Board had opened the hearing to the public, and the public did not include their testimony. Uh, neither, none of the attorneys had an opportunity to come up. So I think we're in the front of the public again, that's the opportunity to be heard.
Mr. Daxey? That's correct, Mr. Attorney. We're gonna continue the public hearing, and after that, the attorneys will be able to, uh, give their estimations. Also, um, Mr. Gazarovski is known author of, uh, Diane and Paul Ryan, so they will be presenting themselves, and they will be able to give their own estimation. Uh, but just for members of the public here to know, uh, Melissa Benedetto received a lot of phone calls, fires, like meetings, about people calling to comment on the ordinance that's been in the news. Just so everyone's aware, there's no public comment on whatever ordinance the government body may or may not be, uh, considering regarding the property. Yeah, but the only public comment here tonight is regarding to this name, is that, uh, we're in a pass location. So I know Melissa received a lot of phone calls the last week or so about people wanting to come and comment on the ordinance. We're only here tonight regarding this application that's been, uh, for, uh, for about last year and a half. Okay?
Um, so with that, just a reminder to the public, um, all members of the public will be allowed to speak. There's a five-minute time limit. Um, and please, as much as possible, please limit your comments to something unique, or to something that someone already said. Please acknowledge, um, that you're agreeing, but, uh, you don't have to go on any further detail. If you would like to speak, please start a line along the, um, the sidewalk. So, Mr. Head of the Line, or everyone will have a chance to speak. You don't have to stand down. It starts to turn around, making people think about Sid, and then to a second group, like a wedding month thing.
It's a big deal.
And if you've already spoken of the previous public comment, please do not speak again. Please step forward.
My name is Patty Keller Thompson. I've lived at sixteen McMillan Lane. I've lived there for three years. I'm sorry.
Actus.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Do you swear on the testimony, if it goes forward, if it's true, the whole church?
Yes. I've lived at sixteen McMillan Lane. I've lived there for thirty-three years, and my grandparents built the house in nineteen forty-eight. So my family's been there probably there quite a while. And funny note, uh, your friends couldn't believe they were building something so far back down, back then. Thank you for the opportunity to express our thoughts on this very important decision. As the Board is aware, granting a D variance is too bold. The applicant not only has to prove that it's inherently beneficial and that the property is particularly suitable for the proposed use, but it is required to address the negative criteria and prove that there won't be substantial negative detriment to the public. Mr. York, and this team a bunch of great lingers to convince the Board and the rest of us that a seventeen-bed sleeping shelter in an R-150 residential neighborhood is nothing but beneficial, even going as far as referring to this as a home. I find this to be far from the truth. The detriments that would be caused are numerous and irreparable. Here are some points that I know you will consider this evening. First, the quality of life in our neighborhood will be adversely affected. There are at least sixty schoolchildren that live within three hundred yards of the proposed site. Most of these children walk to school or get the bus less than a hundred and fifty feet from the proposed site, many at seven a.m. Many of our homes are extremely close, and our yards look into the property. This proximity raises concerns about the clientele that would be sleeping in the shelter. There has already been testimony from Mr. York's witnesses that they cannot guarantee what the backgrounds of the clients would be, and they may have criminal records. Are the employees tasked with supervising these individuals highly trained and ready for any scenario? The testimony given is less than reassuring to me on those points. This is a definite safety concern, and it hinges on our quality of life. When they must leave the facility at seven a.m., is there any guarantee that they won't just walk back further onto the property and into the woods? We've already had an increase in vagrancy since the homeless coalition set out word to come to 405 Washington Street for assistance, and it's been very sad, and it's become a magnet for those seeking assistance, whether the outreach center was open or not. Second point, home value. It doesn't matter who you are, no one here wants their home to lose value, nobody. Doesn't matter who's selling it. There are no comparable scenarios to gauge what this would do to the value of our homes, and why is that? Because there are no homeless shelters in an R-150 zone in the state of New Jersey, not just Tom's River. Someone would have to be quite naive to think this would negatively affect the value of our homes. That being said, would we still be expected to pay the current premium taxes on our properties? Would any of you want to do that if your home suddenly lost possibly seventeen percent of its value? This brings me to the final and truly the most important point. Granting this approval would set a dangerous precedent for the entire town. This decision has far-reaching ramifications. It would give the impression that anything goes in our town. This decision has the potential to cause substantial impairment to the municipal zoning ordinance as well as the municipal master plan. It's why the law states that a D variance is always an exception, not the rule. And while there are exceptions listed, a homeless shelter isn't one of them. No one refutes the fact that there's a homeless problem in town. None of us are heartless. Regardless of what some of you may think, we are just as concerned as you. Some of us have actually worked to try to solve this problem. What we are saying is that this proposed shelter in our residential neighborhood isn't a solution. With a large amount of money that has been earmarked for this project, a larger and more appropriate location should be found, helping far more people experiencing homelessness while retaining the integrity of the town's master plan. Please consider my comments as you make this very important decision, that it will impact not only our neighborhood, but the entire town. Thank you. Thank you.
P is in one, A is in one, B, A, C.
Do you swear on private testimony, if it goes forward, if it's true, the whole church?
I do. Thank you for the hour, Mike. I'll find out to you, Pete, what this, this Keller has already addressed. The church is historically done a lot of good work providing space and support for recovery groups in the LGBT youth community, and supply of food, clothing for all those in need. I and many in this room, although we oppose the overnight shelter, support that work of the church, and have opened our actions, and our fundraising, and etc. But there have been many misrepresentations in the testimony that I've heard in the time that I've, the time I spent here last time, and in the video that I've watched. For one, the house on Windsor that was referred to repeatedly as a shelter and used as a camp, well, it's actually a group home for children up to twelve with them, with twenty-four hours supervision, and it was operated by Ocean's Harbor House for many years. As a group home for children, it wasn't recognized appropriate use in a residential spot, in a safe area. The proposed facility itself like that. It will have very different impact than the children's home on McMillan Avenue. In twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the state chose to change its focus to family, and so they cut the funding for Harbor House, resulted in they're losing essentially that facility in favor of family housing, uh, group family housing. And this good work is very successful in obtaining the variance for a multifamily unit in a single-family residential zone. That is good work, it's twenty-four hours, it's fine. What we're talking about here is a fourteen-hour overnight facility with minimal possible supervision of adults. Additional misrepresentation, the initial letter described a nine-hundred-and-forty-square-foot building. In reality, and based on the plans that were presented, it's a hundred and eighteen-hundred square feet, much larger than what was originally proposed but put out in the letter that went out to the community at the very beginning of this last September. The engineers afterward also noted that several variances were required and that this would be a P variance, which has a much higher criteria to be met in order to be passed unanimously by this Board. Clear benefit to the community with little or no detriment is one of the criteria. I think that the benefit to the community, huge benefit to the homeless, is limited in that they do not have adequate access to public transportation, to the health care services, to the mental health services that they actually need. They, they may get referrals, but they will not have access to those services. Someplace like, um, someplace on Cooper Avenue, near the Department of, uh, Community Affairs, where they have multiple offices that we rest these concerns, might be more appropriate and could certainly be arranged for a variance in that commercial retail mixed-use zone. The negative impacts have already been discussed. The last item of this misrepresentation is the idea of a vending process to allow just the seventeen individuals. They'll, they'll give vending work, for one. And there was discussion that intoxicated or under the influence would not be permitted. I don't see that. They're not going to turn away somebody who's intoxicated or under the influence, and if they do, where are they going? Um, there's also, in, on this state website, they often call the homeless and those that do some homeless, including those that are recently released from incarceration, from jail. And we do have the county jail down the street. They too need shelter from the elements, but do they need that shelter in a residential zone? Any residential zone, not just the R-150 that we talked about. Some history about the, uh, I mentioned before, uh, about the change in funding. Again, in terms of the benefit of this proposal, it may go to the county, the council, the agency, even the church in both financial sense and that sense of, uh...
Thank you for your comments.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments. It's a five-minute time limit.
Oh, thank you. There it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight. Uh, this has been a long process, I don't know for you. I don't know. Uh, I am a founding board member of Tom's River Housing Home Coalition. Uh, I'm also a member of Christchurch. Uh, I'm not in the staff area, I retired from the staff of Christchurch over a year ago, but I am still a member there. Uh, so, at the last meeting, I planned to speak, uh, but we ran out of time, and that's okay. Uh, because, uh, I was gonna advocate for the shelter, but I think I'm not. Because what I wanna do here tonight, I wanna use my time really to advocate for people who are homeless. Particularly people that are, are here tonight, that are here present today. So I've attended every hearing since the beginning of this process, and there have been many times I've found myself really upset over what I've heard. I've heard that homeless people, they've been stereotyped, they've been described in really ugly terms, uh, and they've all been painted with the same one brush. Uh, they've been described as, quote, mentally disturbed, as drug addicts, as people, people have suggested that we should fear them because they wear a dark coat, they're carrying abscesses. Uh, people have described them as pedophiles, I have no idea where that comes from, but they've been described as pedophiles, people, uh, who hate, who are conservatives. The, the comment about disturbance is, I find it really ironic, because I think throughout all of the hearings, there have always been, uh, homeless people here in the gallery, and I can't think of one instance where you, Mr. President, have had to use your gavel to call them to order. Um, they have not been abused or served. To the contrary, uh, the home, the homeless folks here have been very orderly, uh, they've been very respectful, and I give them a lot of credit, because they've been hearing all of this stuff that's been said about them, and it's really hurt, uh, hurt them deeply. And I think they all need to remember, everybody can speak, need to remember that these are human beings. Uh, they all have feelings. In my line of work, they're, they're children of God. So I guess what I'm saying tonight is, uh, I hope we won't hear a lot of that ugly rhetoric, uh, those ugly terms. Uh, I hope we're gonna have a discussion that's respectful, uh, and respectful of everyone. Everyone in the room, everyone who's from church, from AA Geni, everyone from the neighborhood, uh, and particularly those in the gallery who are homeless, uh, because, you know, a night like tonight is pretty off the rhythm, but they don't have a place to go home either. So let's, let's have a good discussion. I hope you have a good discussion, and a respectful, and a discussion that's respectful, that, uh, the dignity of everyone here. Thank you.
Dale Chance, two thirty-one Dan San Avenue, Iron Heights. I'm sorry, who's it? Dale Chance, two thirty-one Dan San Avenue, Iron Heights. D-A-L-E.
Do you swear on private testimony, if it goes forward, if it's true, the whole church?
Yeah, I do. I am a, uh, member of Christ Physical Church, Christ Physical Church for over four years, that's why I'm here today. Along with over a hundred and twenty twelve-step programs that meet each month at Christ Church and Parish House, which is a building that they're, that they're, they're hand-on-to. Christ Church has been providing, has been providing shelter to homeless families for over twenty years through an organization called Interfaith Hospital Academy Network, and now with Family Promise. We house up to four families every three, four months for one week, providing a safe place, a hot meal, and hope. It is an immensely rewarding program, and it gives us as a church the opportunity to heed our Christian mandate to love our neighbors and to keep our baptismal promise to respect the dignity of every human being. It has been life-changing for the people we host and for me personally. Try for a moment to see this shelter as an asset to your community, giving you and your families the opportunity to open your hearts, to provide a meal, a warm coat, a soft pillow, to a fellow human being who has fallen on hard times. It will be life-changing for them and for you. Thank you.
Anthony Ricotta, seven-eleven, OpaTut, Port.
Can you spell the address?
OpaTut, O-P-A-T-U-T. Uh, I'm Anthony Ricotta, I'm here on behalf of a lot of the residents in downtown that have been expressing, uh, the pushback against the seventeen-bed homeless shelter. Um, as I've been running for council and board for the last month and a half, excuse me, um, I've been talking to a lot of residents in downtown. They've expressed their, uh, difficulties with public urination, they've seen, uh, public, um, shouting, approaching the children in their high schools, and this is an issue, this at least. If we put forward a seventeen-bed homeless shelter, this is going to be essentially grounds for attracting more homeless. And with my grandpa two blocks away from, from the, uh, uh, church, he's been there over thirty-something years now, and he is frightened for living alone as an elderly by anxiety. So I'm standing up here to stand against the seventeen beds, and I think we need to focus on a solution outside of this. This is not a solution, this is going to, uh, hurt the neighborhood and hurt work floor. So, that's it, I have for you all. Thank you, thank you.
Tom Champ, we'll, we'll see if that'll be funded next week.
Do you swear on private testimony, if it goes forward, if it's true, the whole church?
Thank you. Good evening. I've been, uh, calling the shooter at the five hundred housing pursuit center, uh, since the reception. Um, several, several years. It was originally stored in Avenue, Dr. Park, um, the third set. Uh, the time I was there, I never saw a homeless person. They, I think there were a few hours of people, a few phone calls, and there were many, uh, homeless people, uh... Since I've stopped, and moved over to Parrot House, uh, it was constant flow of people coming and asking for help. Uh, and they've been able to pick the country over, uh, because they knew that the time. Uh, I've never seen any issues with, uh, people with disorders, or, or, maybe asked for anything like that. Uh, from my knowledge, uh, the Affordable Housing Alliance, because this time, has housed over a hundred and thirty households from Parish House locations. Thank you.
Do you swear on private testimony, if it goes forward, if it's true, the whole church? I do.
Wait, I mean, if we frank, I'm a member of the best church, uh, Christ Physical Church, and basically the governing body of the church. Um, all my life, I've been taught to be a good neighbor, whether it's in my home or in an organization that I represent. In the past life, I was a member of a large corporation, uh, and my job was in, in the community outreach, and that was something that really taught me that, as a member of the community, you have to be a champion, you have to help support those in need, because if not you, who will do it? Our property has five buildings of two different churches that serve families and adults and children from all of the town's urban community. Additionally, over five hundred members of the town's urban community, ten twelve-step programs in the buildings, um, on the church property, and over, over one fall period, uh, over a hundred of the meetings are held there. And a lot of them, uh, may indeed be homeless people, but never once has the police been called or hasn't been any issues with any people attending any of those programs. These things will save lives and return people to being viable, viable family members, workers, taxpayers in the town's urban community, uh, should come. We also have clothes, clothing and food drives to help all those people. Again, I certainly believe that people should practice to be good neighbors. Several months ago, one of the, um, the neighbors reached out to the church office, and they said they, uh, saw a nap sack. So I reached out to... I also gave her my business card and said, if you ever have any issues or see anything you'd like attended to, just let me know. And I'll get ready on it. And she said, well, there is some profanity in the back of that building there. And within a week, we got the profanity off. And I'm sure it was put on the building by the, our neighbors, younger neighbors. I can't see any adults, could be only right in their feet, back of buildings. But that just shows that we are, it's very important to us to be good neighbors, not just to our immediate neighbors, geographic, the whole community of town, certain. Thank you very much for your time.
Sir? Sir, Mr. Franklin, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I need to be back there. Are you part of the governing party of the church?
I'm a pastor.
Okay, then I'm just your, so you are essentially part of one of the advocates for this?
No, no, I'm not.
Yeah, but my question is, if you are a part of the governing party of the church, right, who testified once prior, come on, I'm just a reporter. Since November.
I'm going to check. The applicant is the church, it's not this individual.
Well, he represented himself, though, I said.
But he doesn't have the right or the ability to speak on behalf of the church. I am the church's attorney. I speak on behalf of the church. We're questioning, why didn't the church testify? And my answer is, we'll get into it later, there is no legal obligation for the church to testify. What the church has done is hired its excellent lawyer.
It's not you that you said. It's not you that you said.
And I'm, and I will talk later about it. There's no requirement.
Mr. President actually doesn't have to.
About honesty. About honesty and transparency.
But, but, yeah, you're right. The gentleman who wants to speak has a member of the public, so we should just take his comments as a member of the public.
I don't know if I want to shut that, but there's Harvey in next to the attorney. Yes, Harvey has been here with this application. I agree, Mr. President.
Down, down, down. Everybody, hold your voice, okay? Left, right, left.
On behalf of myself, and I want to disclose.
Thank you, sir.
Can I hear you?
Mr. Chairman, is there any way to get that microphone louder? There's anybody that will speak.
I speak to a director of audio.
It's on. You can just have it hold the mic.
Why don't you hold it, sir?
We have to.
Maybe we can get the chairs so we can sit.
Is everybody here?
Yeah.
That's, how do you?
Do you swear or carve a testimony if it goes forward to the church of all children?
I do. So I initially planned to come here tonight with statistics, numbers, but I quickly realized what it meant. I could tell you that for five years prior to A A taking over Washington Street and providing services there, and the two years afterwards, that there have been no statistical deviations in the number of break-ins, the number of burglaries, the number of, really, the nine one one call in the neighborhood surrounding that church. No real statistical deviation. That's two years of A A providing services at Washington Street. Now, I'm not naive enough to assume, but the truth is, the there people in this room that don't even believe homeless people are people that, we are naive to think. That is the truth. It's unfortunate. But the fact is, they are trying to provide a service to people. People who have broken dreams, broken promises, people who may just need that one break in life before being able to get back up on their feet. And you talk about your children, you talk about your families, and the example that you set for them is to look down upon and despise another human being because they are in a lower lot in life than you are. That is just, instead of taking the opportunity to teach them the generosity and the charity that I have felt by some of the members in this community, which I would never do, I admire that. And I emphasize, this is an opportunity to provide seventeen beds, an opportunity to help people in the community. How is that not a service? How is that not an act of worship? I don't know what size, what size. Something that, God, soften your hearts, make you do the right decision instead of trying to attack the church and trying to help with you. Are you in the right mindset? Thank you.
Harvey Washington, why don't you ask him to speak, Tom Turner?
Do you swear or carve a testimony if it goes forward to the church of all children?
I'm going to talk a little bit more globally. I'm going to talk about Ward Four. Ward Four satuated with homes, apartments, and programs that serve people in need. Not only do we have the physical structures, but in my opinion, we've had more than our fair share of experiences. I live on Messenger Street. Cromona Bowlin Home for Funerals is on the corner. These are the structures that I am personally aware of within Ward Four. There are two rental assistants on Messenger Street, one is directly across the street from me. It has housed people with physical and mental health issues and then just other situations. There's a group home for women on Messenger Court. There's an annual health clinic on Lean Street. There's apartments for people in need on the corner of Lean and Order. There's apartments for people in need on Broad Street. There's a reentry program for prisoners on Main Street. There's the jam and the library. These above places have all effects on the area. So what is it like to live in Ward Four? I've been on Messenger Street for forty-three years. Over the years, I have observed or have become involved with good and bad experiences from most of the above places, from the rental assistants directly across the street from me. A servant, current neighbor, and she is a neighbor at the length of to live across the street from. I'd go way back to nineteen eighty-three. I was in my thirties. I was a single mother with three little children. So I'd just bought a house. It was kind of difficult for me in my position. But I had, there were visitors to this home that had fistfights in the street. A drunk person came, a visitor, came to my door asking me for help, to help me, for me to help him while his gas stove. The next group that moved into the house, person street from me, was special needs young men. We called out comments to my then teenage daughter who was all dressed up for the prom. But we also helped the people, the renters who lived there. We, my husband and I, hunk-junked start her car a couple of times. I dressed her womb when she fell off the steps. We helped her son when she had a mental breakdown. We were neighbors. My neighbors and I have had some experience with the women's group home on Messenger Court. One woman had a tendency to curse up the little kids in the neighborhood. But at the same time, neighbors would readily say hello to the women who lived there. They reconciled in a situation when one woman was sitting on the curb waiting for a bus on Messenger Court, the bus is coming there. But I must point out, these women live in a house, in a home, twenty-four, seven, and have the caregivers around the clock. Regarding the apartments on Lean and Order Street, men would call out nasty comments to the women who were going to and from the spot, simply standing, taking a smooth. But at the same time, a woman from the same apartment building was standing in the middle of the street in her bathroom and bathroom, a neighbor stopped his car, got out and helped her. We are not heartless. As for the apartments on Broad Street, we all know about the fire a couple of years back. The Red Cross came, Facebook put out a call for a help for Charles who was badly burned. My neighbors and I had been offered to find one person a place to stay. Even before the fire, one neighbor would spot Charles, about to get a cup of coffee. I even drove him to the store on Mary Potte. We are not heartless. We do care. One of my neighbors died of a woman sleeping in her van two times and just kindly said, you can't sleep here. The bottom line is this, you as a zoning board have a very serious decision to make. Should you change the zoning for this area and meet the needs of homeless people who will be in the shelter for one to a few days, a shelter operated by people who possibly do not even live in the neighborhood, or keep the zoning as is to maintain the atmosphere in the area to the satisfaction of the residents? This area, Magnolia, Washington Street, and the off course is a fine location. The houses are up there in value. The homeowners are paying the good penny in taxes. They keep their properties in excellent shape, have lived there many years. They send their kids to our schools to support local businesses or even run local businesses. The shelters could go in another location, but Magnolia Lane and Washington Street can't pick up and move. Do you want to check out P A C H U C L for ten, Washington Street, Tom Turner?
Do you swear or carve a testimony if it goes forward to the church of all children?
Thank you. Thank you for letting us speak. I feel that somehow this discussion about required variance for the homeless shelter has turned into a for or against homeless people, and that is not what this is. The purpose of this discussion is to discuss the pros and cons and the benefits of detriments to the neighborhood. I know that many people in the community of residents along Washington Street, Magnolia Lane, and the other surrounding streets, we are not heartless, as I mean just said. We help people. I carry cards around to give away to, food cards to give away to homeless. People give to the clothing that the church collects on the basis. I agree with the first speaker who talked about the municipal land use law, use law, who says that the pros, the benefit, the inherent benefit of the shelter needs to outweigh the detriment. I feel that that is not the case, given the type of shelter it's going to be. We have already heard that there is not going to be a way to, to know special procedures or requirements or specialized people trained to investigate or ask questions of the people who are coming to stay at the shelter. We don't doubt if they do have, unfortunately, mental illness or some kind of a past that is not the best for the neighborhood. I think there's also the magnet effect, which I have already seen really right across from the church. There are lots and lots more, there are more people walking up and down the streets. My neighbor took a picture of someone sleeping on the church's property in the early morning in front of the Pinkerton Garden. I think the safety of the neighborhood is also an issue. There are elderly people, unfortunately, but there are elderly people in the neighborhood who live alone and who are reasonably concerned. The incident at the library of the recorder being assaulted was probably unusual. But I think that people can be reasonably concerned when they see something like that happen. As the first speaker said, and I agree with, Washington Street is in the neighborhood of several schools, and there are kids who wait on the corner, and kids who run behind. I just think that the homeless need help, but I do not think that an overnight shelter for seventeen people, if I understood correctly, thirteen men, four women, half wall curtains, two people, am I wrong, is that wrong? Two people overnight, I don't know that that's a really safe environment. I also agree with the fact that I do feel that, I've been there for fifty years. I do feel that the value of the homes will go down. Because the one instance I saw came out of New York City where, living within five hundred feet, less than five hundred feet, the value of the properties went down. I'm just confident that the community of the neighborhood residents who are here tonight are not, we're not against leaving the homeless population the home they need. Many of us, I'm sure, contribute personally to that. I, I just think that this is not the location. It was a while ago, desperately posted on Facebook, and they thought the right location would be on Cooper Avenue near the new social services. And I know this is not a discussion of where it should be, but it's a discussion of whether or not the church's property is the place for it to be. Thank you.
George, George McCullough, eleven Magnolia Lane. M C, capital A, U L I, double left.
Do you swear or carve a testimony if it goes forward to the church of all children?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Just for the record, we've had a lot of conversations among our neighbors and fellow residents, and I haven't encountered anybody who is heartless about the homeless situation, looks down and considers them not people, just for the record. I think what we have here is a classic cost benefit situation, and that's really what underlines the zoning, from what I see, the zoning variance rules. When I looked up why are there zoning laws in the first place, I'm just going to read the first one that came up, promoting community well-being. There were three bullets, separating incompatible uses, preserving property values, protecting health and safety. I don't think that a homeless shelter in the church in the middle of our residential neighborhood checks any of those boxes. It makes no sense to many of us to place this in a residential neighborhood, and preventing this seems to be exactly why the zoning laws exist. The homeless crisis in Ocean County cries out for a comprehensive solution, which includes more affordable housing, shelter, mental health, drug addiction counseling, but organized together and located in a place that does not disrupt an entire community. I'm going to skip some of the things that others have already said. Look, I've been here for every one of these hearings, and looking back on them as various folks got up and testified on the application, I got confused on a lot of things. The first was mentioned earlier, was an application for a nine hundred square foot addition. Turns out, oh, that's really eighteen hundred square feet. And then another night, oh, well, the shelter would be in the basement of the church. So now we're up north of two thousand square feet. I don't understand how that happened. There were so many inconsistencies. Men and women would be separated, but later we learned that won't necessarily be. I still don't understand the parking situation. They want to reduce the number, but I drive through. They want to reduce the number, but I drive through, it looks like there aren't a hundred big spaces there anymore, like there was supposed to be. We have concerns about staffing, no qualifications or professional certifications. Two of those unqualified attendants will be on video that. No discussion of what happens when they don't show up for work, or the inevitable turnover, or how they lease the rest of the property and folks get turned away. And that's really the biggest threat, and my biggest threat, that folks will get turned away. Clearly, there are innocent homeless folks that need our help as a community, but we also have to realize, and this is from the National Alliance to End Homelessness, which is a pro-homeless group, which quotes the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, "People living in shelters are more than twice as likely to have a disability." Thirty-one percent of the homeless population reported having a serious mental illness. Twenty-four percent chronic substance abuse. The magnet effect was being mentioned, it's seen and happened all around us, with the Bon Jovi homeless kitchen in the library and the church's continually expanding services, which by the way seem far beyond the services that I read on their original adulation. It seemed to keep going up and up, we have little showers coming through, that's not a coincidence. You remember the Red Roof Inn? Talk about a negative effect on our town, cost of fortune affects, and we're probably still seeing results. Our downtown does not need this, it struggles to reach its attention. I'm going to end here. My wife and I were born and raised at the shore, we moved away for thirty, forty years. When we came back, we couldn't move anywhere, we chose to come through. We fell in love with our home, our street, our neighborhood, and we also fell in love with the zone, we did know it. But the zoning rules play a huge role in making the town what it is, and as taxpayers, we're counting on you to make the right decision and do not disturb this variance. Thank you. (applause)
Billy Gordon, thirty-sixth Wall Street, on server. Martin, Martin, you're on server.
If you're a firm testimony, if you're a close court, if you're a church, the one that I'm hearing. What is the purpose of the planning of zoning board? To have the recording of use and aesthetics. Proper use of an area, keep property values up, safety and reuse of the area. The zoning board is a neighborhood's last line defense in keeping it safe, protecting the property values and aesthetics. The church has been a good neighbor up to this point. They are mostly quiet, do good things for community, even letting the kids sled on their head. This variance being asked for is not for a shed six inches closer to a property line or a flat pole a foot higher. This is a complete change of use, a spot zone change. It puts kids and home safety at risk. I have personally observed with, on Magnolia Lane, with two homeless people wandering fifteen to twenty feet into people's property. Girls who called home, as police were called, they lost their sense of fear and no feeling of the bad day. Police removed them, they had no ID or mode of transportation. My granddaughter of ten had nude comments made to her by two homeless men hanging on the book we turned in at the library. For a town that has tried so hard to revitalize itself, why are we encouraging homeless gathering spots? There are better places suited for the in this town for that. All we were asking is to please do your job and hold the line against the wrong use and protect property values and safety for the neighborhood, neighborhood area. Please say no to this variance. Thank you.
Phil Stanicki, A.T. Sky Hall, reported out of River, also known as Cousin Philly on the streets with the homeless. I'm here to speak on behalf of the homeless. Absolutely, absolutely do. Ready? All right, now, I want to start off with everybody that I remember, we're all children of God, all right? We're not here to fight against each other, we're supposed to help each other out. That church, this happens to be at A-170, but there's a zoning variance that saved a lot of people's lives, and a church is a building that people go to, almost every human being in the world says thank God at least one time in their life. So why would you not give a building, a church, that saves people's lives each and every day? Now, what I do, the team leaders of Just Believe, I started out in Tom's River, I just happened to spread my wings, I go from Little Lake Harbor to Point Pleasant, all week long. There's hundreds. I know of three hundred and eleven people on the recent paper that I feed two times a week, because I don't have enough time to do it, five times a week. And be able to go to a shelter, stay there, wake up in the morning, have a counselor, have somebody sit there, just take the work, and within a year's time, you know, it's your life. We housed two hundred and twenty-seven people last year, right? And just imagine, we had a shelter all year long. You know, just think, we need a shelter. Sorry it has to be a church right here, but it's a start, we've got to start somewhere. Remember, we're all children of God, nobody's better than nobody else. Start treating children with respect, and when you see the people on the street, of course, they look a little down and out. They're homeless, they're trying to get back on their feet, give them an opportunity. It happens to anybody, that's all I got to say. And thank you so much for, it's been really a great experience.
Psycho, through to. Homeless here at the library. It ain't never one, but it's Michael's here though. I lived in Washington, supporting my children. I never see so much issues just to help supply that to me on how. Like really, like, people are down and out. You talk about people are journeying inside of the building or whatever. Okay, they're homeless. Sit down. Well, you gotta fix a problem in order to do something about it.
Come on, along by, everyone's entitled to their opinion, you don't have to agree with them, so please keep the comments in the crowd to them. None.
You're like, we're homeless, we have hearts, we have souls, we have blood, we have spirits. We believe in God, just like any of you. We cut ourselves, we bleed red, we're human. You know, I'm not here, I came back from a tough, uh, course, and I come back to Tom's River and to see a friend of mine taking care of an elderly that's outside in the cold, stayed the day out. Okay? Now, I'm a human. I'm going to help my friend out, I'm going to make sure this person gets out. You know, and advocate for anybody that's homeless, but something's, action has to get done. If we don't do something fast, people are going to die. We come to these meetings month after month, friends make decisions, friends make choices. Action, that is the truth. Action needs to be done. For some guys. Now, who knows, uh, of these people that are out there doing drugs, left the, left the, uh, quite a shell, I think, clean and sober for five years. I fought for my own rehab. I had the ability to do CPR, I had the ability to help another person in a hospital, doing security, but I had to. Just not out there. Okay? We sit out here, we talk about it every day, that you gotta choose what to do next. What's the humanity of things? People are dying. Every year we come out here, every month, uh, you know, we come to these meetings, talk about the same old thing over and over again, and it's getting worse. Now, let's start out from somewhere. Somewhere small like a church. Let them open. Let them survive. Let them get a hot water on their backs when we take them to shower, wipe their arms, and take care of themselves. Human nature. Maybe you won't have to worry about people feeding public. Action. Thank you for having me share.
My name is Brother Jackson, my address is, you know, I'm forty-three, Alden Drive, Thomas Avenue. I'm here today as an advocate for the homeless, in which I've worked with the homeless for over twenty-five years of my life. I began working with the homeless in Essex County where I was running rings, and I've been a resident of Thomas Avenue, Jersey for the past twenty-eight years. Not only am I an advocate for the homeless, I'm also a local pastor, and my husband and I oversee two of the seven cold roof, warming centers that was opened this past cold winter from November to March. And so, keeping in mind that I'm here because I'm advocating for the homeless, what I want to say is that, since I've been a resident of Tom's River, homelessness has always existed. But over the past couple of years, it has increased tremendously, and because of the increase in homelessness in Ocean County and particularly in Tom's River, my husband and I have decided some five years ago to transform our church, our sanctuary, and our community center. Every year in November, we take all the furniture out and we fill it with cotton in order to be able to give the homeless some places. It seems like the right thing to do as human beings. While we understand that operating a cold roof warming center will not totally solve the homeless epidemic, we are called to do something. Giving them clothes, where will they put the clothes? Giving them canned goods, where will they put the canned goods if they're homeless? And so, operating the cold roof warming center has helped to cut down on fatalities, it has helped to get people off the street, and help the homeless to get the help that they need, because we did not want to be a part of the issue and have a revolving door. We've partnered with several community leaders to be able to get all of their needs met. And everyone that comes through the doors of our two sites, we do an intake form that would tell us if they have addictions or if they have mental illness, if they were born or raised in Ocean County and things like that. So, I've heard testimonies at several different zoning meetings, and I'd like to address that. The first thing that I heard is that our homeless are sleeping behind residential homes. Where else are they going to go if there is no homeless shelter for them? And, and so, would a permanent homeless shelter solve this issue? Number two, I've heard fear being expressed right here, that most of our homeless people are mentally ill or drug addicted. That is not what my husband and I are encountering. In fact, sixty percent of our homeless population this past cold winter season were senior citizens and or disabled, and they have an income. Their income is not enough to be able to afford the housing here in Ocean County. Secondly, we sleep under the same roof, my husband and I, with the homeless population. We have never encountered any issues. In fact, we've been very inspired because we see men and women getting up in the morning in spite of them being homeless, going to work every day. There's also been a stigma that we're bringing people from other towns in, into Ocean County, and that is in fact not true. Most of our people were born and raised here. I am for a permanent homeless shelter.
Michelle Williams, one eleven, till we dry, Tom's River. If you're a firm testimony, if you're a close court, if you're a church, the one that I'm hearing. So, thank you, Miss Sandra Tilly, today to speak to you. I am very proud to say that I am on board of the Thomas River Housing and Homes Coalition. For almost two years now, at the parish hall, the Coalition has served the unhoused. On average, about fifty a day. That's Monday to Friday, from nine to four, about fifty that come into the, into the parish hall. So, if you figure that's about two hundred and fifty a week, and I just quickly did the math, it's thirteen thousand a year, even there, two years. So I think we've demonstrated that there is a need. I wanted to, uh, there's so much that I wanted to say in five minutes. I found this in the Sunday paper, the Annenberg Park breaks, May eleventh, and I wanted to read just a little piece of it. New Jersey can't afford to ignore the high housing crisis, and it says, "There is a truth that we must face, a truth too long ignored." It's been buried beneath bureaucracy and bias, and I would say, here, we fear. The housing crisis in New Jersey is not just a crisis of supply and demand, it is a crisis of justice, and until our local leaders confront it, New Jersey will continue to fall short of its promise. And until our local leaders, my dear zoning board, you are our local leaders, and I, I can understand that this is a tough decision, and there must be a lot of pressure that has been placed on you. But take thought with that, this is, you are not the first zoning board in Tom's River that has done anything like this. In nineteen eighty-five, you approved the House on Windsor for Adalists, but I'm sure, because it was the first, there was some controversy. But I'm sure, because it was the first, there was some controversy. And then again, in two thousand and three, Harbor House asked to build a home there right in the middle of houses, right down the block from St. Joe's in Donovan. And zoning board approved it, and both flursted. And, and in fact, we have heard said that if we approve one, they pop them all over the place. Well, nineteen eighty-five, two thousand and three, that was eighteen years between each of them. So, I think that disputes that. This week, I listened to a talk from Phil Zimmerman, the director of the LIA in Ocean County. And he was talking about the homeless, and he reminded me of something that we all learned in school. Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I don't know if you learned it in senior or in sociology class, psychology class in college. But it's a principle that says how we grow and how we achieve our potential. And it's about needs, and it starts, there are five levels. First is physiological, then the next is safety, belonging and loving, self-esteem, and then self-actualization. We can achieve what we can't achieve. But that first one, that first level, you cannot go beyond a level until you successfully achieve your first physiological. That's air, clean air, clean water, clothing, and shelter. So, as we talk about these unhoused people, if they can't find or do not have a, a place to sleep or a place to call home, they're not going to develop to the next level. They will not feel safe. They will not be able to develop their socially loving relationships. They will not be able to develop self-esteem, nor their potential. So, tonight, with your vote, I believe you can achieve two extraordinary developments. And yes, in time, you will have had a part in assisting the first seventeen to go beyond the physiological need, to someday achieving their potential. And that will happen in twenty-two. And number two, finally, for the sake of all of us who love Tom's River, you will give, you will write this city's leadership, which is so sorely missing, on the land he serves in his people. Thank you.
And Kyle, nineteen Lincoln Avenue in Tom's River. I do. I have lived in Tom's River since nineteen sixty-six. In the past thirty-eight years, my wife and I live on Lincoln Avenue, barely two blocks away from the proposed location, the homeless shelter. Many others live even closer to it. I notice that most of the people who've spoken in favor of the shelter live nowhere near the proposed location. Since retiring in two thousand and eleven, I've visited the Ocean County Library, over here, on Washington Street, almost every week. Recent months, I have noticed a significant increase in the number of homeless people outside the library, in the parking garage, and inside libraries. They self-occupy chairs and tables, attending to the library patients. I was puzzled by this, until I found out that the Ocean County Commissioners had allowed what is essentially a soup kitchen to operate in the old Duncan Avenue states inside the library. This has undoubtedly acted as an magnet for more homeless residents down in town area. Now you have before you a proposal for a seventeen-bed homeless shelter in residential area where it does not belong. If this facility will soon be overwhelmed, or anything I know because I see these porcelains every time I go down. It's more than seventeen. And the draw that creates, created by the soup kitchen and the shelter itself, it won't be long until they operate this back to you and saying seventeen is not enough, and we have another twelve, and we have another thirty, these people need help, and they do need help. At that point, the facility becomes a huge magnet for more and more homeless from outside the area, growing towards peaceful and safe neighborhoods. This must not be allowed to happen. My wife and I had hoped to spend the rest of our lives in our current home, but now I don't think we'll be able to do that if this happens. So, before you vote, I ask you to consider two things. First, would you want a homeless shelter in your neighborhood? And second, do you want to be remembered as the people who allowed this in our county to be turned into a mini San Francisco? Look what happened, that was a place to destroy, that's the truth. Everybody knows, everybody watches the television, can see what happened. I'm not saying these people don't need help, they sure do, because what this county needs is a county shelter. And I ask the good people of Christchurch and their supporters, whose hearts are nowhere in the right place, to take all the effort and time and money they've spent on this misguided proposal, instead use it to pressure the Ocean County Board of Commissioners to finally build a homeless shelter in this county, in a suitable location. Surely, there is a better location, and the county should be one. Thank you for hearing me.
I have asked a question. My name is Pam Quatste. Q U A. Q U A T S D. I live at one Swallow in Manchester. Manchester? S W A L L O W. I do. Um, I have asked a question at a previous zoning board meeting, so am I entitled to speak now?
Then you are speaking, yes.
We said at the beginning that we can't ask questions if we asked before, so I just want to clarify.
Yes, absolutely, this is the public comments portion, this is when you would make those comments, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Comments, not questions. Comments, not questions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now my brain, I got brain freeze. Much like the previous speaker, well, let me say this. I've been attending all these zoning board meetings, and when I've learned, which I learned here, that nowhere in Tom's River is there zoning for a homeless shelter, I was beside myself. That is despicable, that nowhere in this town, there is already zoning for a shelter. The gentleman previous to me said that, suggested that Christchurch and all of their supporters should go and pressure the commissioners. I think everybody here should do that. You don't want a shelter in this zone, go to the commissioners and say, "Well, we need a shelter someplace." That's the first thing. One of the things that's come up at these hearings is the concern about, the very real concern, about people being attacked or something. And I have been working with the homeless since the eighties in New York City. I lived at a shelter with homeless women, some of whom were mentally ill. In that shelter, I was never attacked by the women who lived in the shelter. I never felt in danger by any of the people with whom I lived. They were delusional, some of them were paranoid. And my background, before I went and lived there, because I was a volunteer, was not in social work. I do not have an MSW, I have nothing. I worked in an office before I went there. But you don't have to have specialized skill to know when somebody's talking, "Wow, this person," after you get to know them a little bit, and they keep saying the same thing over and over again, like, "People are following me." You have to conclude, "This person is really paranoid, is dealing with, struggling with terrible paranoia." Or, when you have a lady in the house, as we did, who had a bedroom, but she refused to sleep in her bedroom because she said there were snakes in the bedroom. So, instead, she slept in the dining room every night. So, that lady was delusional. I never felt endangered by her. Since I moved to Ocean County, I have continued to work with the homeless. I have met a man who was sleeping in Huddy Park. I took him coffee, I took him to get his laundry done. I never felt in danger by that gentleman. I met a lady who was sleeping in the woods. I took her to food pantries and to the help center on Mantelokene Road after Hurricane Sandy. I never felt in danger from that person either. I volunteered at the Tom's River Housing Center, which is run by, how, staffed by Affordable Housing Alliance. Thank you.
Hello, Britton Cook, twenty-eight Yover Street, Tom's River. Full disclosure, I do work... I do. Okay, so, full disclosure, I do work for the Affordable Housing Alliance. I'm the Director of Property Management. I service our residents in Monmouth County. I'm also a Tom's River resident, I live right in the heart of downtown Tom's River. I believe small decisions have far-reaching impacts. The facts are simple, we have a homeless problem right here, right downtown, right in our neighborhood, and we have a small solution right before us. I live here, I see homeless people every day on our streets, I talk to them. They sleep in the parking garage, they sleep in the park, they might sleep in my backyard, I'm not really sure. This seventeen-bed shelter is a chance to help people get back on their feet, instead of leaving them without hope or a place to sleep. We have two choices, we can support a shelter, this shelter, and help people rebuild our lives, or we can do nothing and just watch the homelessness grow in our community. Simple, simple. Are we going to make decisions based on fear and what ifs? There's a lot of fear and what ifs, what if this, what if that, I'm fearful, I'm fearful, and, I mean, I understand that, but we have to do the right thing. I support the shelter because it's a small step towards solving a big problem. Let's help our neighbors when they need it the most, that's all I got.
Warren McClure, six oh five North Benet, Tom's River, New Jersey. I'm C L U R E. Absolutely. Six oh five, North Benet, two words. I'm here to ask the planning board to approve the church's request. The church is empowered to offer an opportunity, and I think we should capitalize on it. Because what's the end result of it? The end result is people getting back on the road again, getting straight with their lives, and enjoying the life, and live like the rest of us did. We offer solutions, and it's the only solution we have right now. We can wait and delay, but other solutions, this one is pretty much in the ground. If they approve it, they can get it done at a fast pace, and offer all the planning board and everything else in other towns and other cities. And basically, we're helping seventeen people, more than seventeen people, we're helping about two hundred people in here to get them back on the road recovery. And many of these people go to work every day. We're worried about the what ifs, the maybes, this and that, and the other things. But, as humans, we can be conservative about helping people. So, from the bottom of my heart, I hope you vote for positive results for the church to promote, because that'd be the only game in town right now. We should capitalize on it, we could talk about all the other causes, but what's up with the accomplishments? Delay, delay, delay.
Hi, my name's Samantha Kidd, I am homeless. I do. I just want to clear something up real fast. We, as a whole congregation, do not need any porn, to be honest. Some of us, yes, have mental issues, some of us have cognitive addiction. And me personally, I'm not dranette, I'm not an alcoholic, and I don't need porn at all. With anything, I have tried to protect power, okay? I've broken up fights at seven eleven. I, okay, nonsense usually happens, you know what I mean? Okay, we have, we have to have that permission. We have to break down all the rights too, we're all human beings. People talking about power, we play, but what about ours? Being homeless, you don't have power. You didn't ask for this. It was a concern, something came, or whatever the case was. But we need the help, it's simple. The money is there, use it, you don't want some kind of, appropriate the money properly? I, 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 I don't need this information, that's it. I think it's still a task. Thank you.
Mark Mossop, I have the most. M O S S O P. First thing, I want to say about the Jig Deck Soup Kitchen, they are not a soup kitchen. When you're ready to get a meal from them, you have to volunteer and donate your time. And that is what most of us do every day. We come back, we help, we wash down tables, we wipe counters. They are not a soup kitchen. Second, I am a caretaker to a seventy-eight-year-old lady who sleeps outside in this weather. A seventeen-bed shelter could help house this lady. She wouldn't have to sleep outside, we sleep literally outside of this. That's not okay. I've been taking care of her for almost months now, and I've been trying to try and figure out a way to get her help. Seventeen-bed shelter, I know, they wouldn't pick and choose, but I'm sure that they would pick some of the other ways to get them out of the streets, because this weather is not the kind of weather that they can, as some people have said, survive in. It's very detrimental to their health. And I feel as though you guys are just not taking the opportunity to help in a way that could help seventeen people get off of their feet. I may not be one of those seventeen people, but I'm sure I would know that seventeen person. And we all work together, we all know, hey, there's seventeen beds, we're all not going to try to beat around this place. I want to get that shit too, because I work with a lot of the people out here, a lot. I know at least fifty of them that I work with. We are trying to get housing through DCA and Trenton, we have multiple means that we're trying to... We have multiple means that we're trying to get help with. We're not a detriment to people, we don't mean anyone any harm. And most of the people out here are just looking for help and a way to get on their feet. We use the programs, the church, I've heard mentioned tonight, they have showers for us. Would you rather us be around you and smell, or would you rather us actually be clean and walking around? They give us clothes, so we're not in stinky clothes points. Would you rather see us in the same clothes for two weeks straight? Or would you rather us have an outfit that we change into? That's what this church does. And a shelter would help with that. You talked about urination in public. Some of these people, if they were in a shelter, they wouldn't have to go to the bathroom in public. There's no bathrooms for us to use. Huddy Park is locked up. You guys want to lock those bathrooms? Torpedo Park is locked up, the one with the big torpedo. They have two bathrooms as well, those have been locked since winter of last year. But we are forced to go to the bathroom in public because there's no bathrooms as well. Anyway, seventeen-bed shelter would help with some of those issues. There's not really much that I can say. I would just hope that you guys approved this and give seventeen people some of the help that they at least need to get a start for a shelter in this county. Because as I keep saying, Ocean County is the only county with no shelter. Other people aren't coming from other counties because they have shelters to go to. All these people you see are in your county. You heard Cousin Billy, five hundred people in this county he helps. They're in your county, they're not coming from other counties. Because they have their own shelters to go to. We have no shelter. We sleep in the woods, we sleep on the steps of where we can. I sleep outside the library because I have nowhere else to go. I don't really have much else to say. Just please make the right decision. Thank you.
May God Chief, Pope T.C.H.Y., 2258 South Shanteklar Court, Tom's River. I do. Recently, I have been reading a book by Episcopal Bishop, Bishop Mary Ann Buddy. And its title is How to Learn to Be Brave. And it talks about taking the first step and how difficult first step in any kind of, something that is unusual or not familiar, how difficult that is. It is, it is something that could start you on a road that would change your life and the trajectory, trajectory of your life, if, if, if down the road. Now, I moved to Tom's River from Hackett Sac, which is the county seat in Bergen County. Just as Tom's River is an ocean. There was a desperate need for the Bergen County to do something about the homeless there. And after years of pleading with the county, Bergen County finally built and opened a shelter for the homeless. Comparing Hackett Sac to Tom's River, it's, it's really kind of ridiculous. Hackett Sac was very, very small. It was all about one and a half miles long and about three-quarters of a mile wide. Compared to Tom's River, it's really tiny. But I can tell you that, to my knowledge, my home was never devalued living during the time that they, that this homeless shelter was there, and it's still there. It, it is a, it was a great relief for the people in Bergen County, as well as myself, to, to know that the people had someplace to go. And it was much better than living in a broken shed or under the highway overpass. The result of the, of the community shelter was that the people in the community rallied around those that were in need. What evolved was a constant donation of food and clothing for these people. And the assistance became the norm in the community. The need for homeless, homeless shelter in this county is very great. The annex on the Christ Episcopal Church property may not be the perfect solution. It may not be the answer. But however, it is the beginning. And the beginning is, is the most important one step, one step to bring us closer to humanity needs. Needs to begin someplace, and that someplace is right here at the annex.
Good evening, my address is Norrey Hurry, H-U-R-Y-K. My address is 1149 Marley Road, that's M-A-R-L-A-N-E, code in Tom's River.
You swear from a testimony before the court with the church of all churches?
So some of you may recognize me, some of you may not. I am a former councilwoman here in Tom's River.
We need you back.
That's not bad. So I did not realize that there was a homeless population in Tom's River before I went into office. I had lived here for almost twenty years, like twenty years at the time, and really had no idea. Until some advocates came to one of our council meetings very early in my term. And I realized, as an elected official, that it was absolutely my responsibility to do something, to do something to it. So my colleague, Terrence Turnback, and I convened a group of community leaders, religious leaders, and homeless advocates. And we formed a group that evolved into the Tom's River Housing and Homeless Coalition. So we did work very hard. We actually did a site visit to the Bergen County Shelter to see what they did. And we got some advice from them. We did a lot of research. And I did meet with our planner, Dave Roberts. And he informed me that there were, as someone previously said, no zoning areas in Tom's River that allowed for homeless shelter. So I said, where can we go? Where are we allowed to go with this? No. So he said, accept. With the possibility that for an emergency shelter, that that was allowable as a council or a school church under certain circumstances. And so when Christ Episcopal Church was working with us and willing to potentially sponsor the property, because we had looked for property, we looked everywhere. We looked at property that the town shared. We looked at property that the county owned. And yes, we worked with the county commissioners. They were very engaged. They were willing to put up funds just at Bergen County. And Christ Episcopal, neither not, Episcopal Church runs the shelter in Bergen County. And they also partner with Fulfill, which I know we, many of us in Tom's River, work with Fulfill on a regular basis. And we also have other groups that are willing to pitch in to make this a community success. And the one thing that I want to impress is that we cannot put our heads in the sand and pretend that homelessness does not exist. Or just be ignorant like I was before, and pretend that homelessness does not exist. Have the privilege to believe that Tom's River residents are unhoused, because some of them are. And we are only one paycheck, one illness, or one missed social security check away from being homeless, when it happens. And so those who don't have the support of their friends or family, that if they get into trouble, or if they don't have the skill set to stay housed without some education, it is our responsibility as, as public officials to provide that support. Because we cannot wish homelessness away. We cannot legislate homelessness away. The only thing we can do is support homelessness away. And that is what Bergen County did. They opened their shelter in 2015 and six, much to the chagrin of many politicians. Six months later, they were the first community in the United States to end chronic homelessness in their county. It's not a shelter, but I don't know how many they have, honestly. But seventeen people don't go there to live forever. They go there to get on their feet, to get the support they need, to get the services that they need, to connect with the right individuals, to help them get out of the situation they're in and no longer be unhoused. That's the goal. In Bergen County, they're number ninety-eight. That's it. So I hope we can be a successful country.
I'd like to thank the board to be able to express my concerns about homeless shelter in a residential area. When we had one of the meetings here, I asked if there was a pedestrian study done. And Mr. Ryan said that he lived here for twenty-two years and did not feel he needed one. Well, we had a traffic study done, but Washington Street has a lot of pedestrian traffic. There's four schools in the area where children walk. At some, Conter High School South starts at seven fifteen. Kids walk along Washington Street along, in around seven o'clock in the morning. There's bus stops, there's walkers walking to Washington Street School, Donaire Catholic, St. Joseph's School, and Conter High School South. There's kids that run all along Washington Street. The high school kids and St. Joseph's Elementary School children run. Like all, like five, six days a week. And my concern was that no one on the board asked why wasn't there a pedestrian study done? If you know, and you didn't really ask about the four schools in this residential area. And I was just very concerned about that. And it's one of the busiest pedestrian roads traveled with walkers. And I walk Washington Street every day. I feel like the shelter would not be in residential area, not because of the times that we've been exposed to children walking to high school at seven o'clock in the morning. And I just feel that at five, kids are coming home from practice, from games. People, kids all walk through there and stuff. And I was just concerned. And I'm concerned about the children's safety. Children are the innocence. And people live in that neighborhood because it's close to the schools and all the kids and ride their bikes and everything. And people, if you put a homeless shelter there, our parents might be concerned about the safety of their children and stuff like that. And I'm just going to bring this up that I feel, and this is why I'm concerned about the children's safety. In 1978, a twelve-year-old boy was murdered in Tom's River. I don't know if you, if I remember that. If you lived here more than fifty years, you would know. By a transient man, he killed and raped a twelve-year-old boy. And I just feel that if, well, Conter needs a homeless shelter. It should be put in a commercial area, not in the residential area where children go and play. And, and that's how I feel. I just feel that you should think of the children, and the church should think of the children too. In the beginning, like, they're neighbors. And I think people need to be able to, parents need to be able to sleep at night knowing that their children are safe. We don't need another tragedy like we had in 1978. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Wild, W-I-L-D, 11 North Sixth Street, Surf City. 11 North Sixth Street, Surf City, New Jersey.
You swear from a testimony before the court with the church of all churches?
I do. Good evening. My name's Jeff Wild. I am a partner in New Jersey's largest law firm, Robinson Sandware. I'm also an officer of the New Jersey Coalition for Homelessness. I'm also the son of a man who was homeless during the Great Depression and when he got a little help, he put it through law school after he started a business. But what's most relevant and the reason I feel is because I have more experience, I believe, than any lawyer of the state of New Jersey in working with municipal officials and representing unhoused people on a critical choice that you have to make. And that's a choice between trying to block efforts to help unhouse people or just to allow efforts to help unhouse people. I can tell you from experience that the former is illegal and it doesn't work. The latter is not just legal, it works, it helps impacts bears and it's compassionate. And I'd like to give you just two experiences of municipalities that have, one went right, one went left. My firm and I represented unhoused people in Lakewood, New Jersey. And Lakewood decided that it was going to try, rather than help people, to try to just force them out of town, and they thought that would solve the problem. That was illegal, and ultimately Lakewood ended up paying for housing for everybody after spending who knows how much in legal fees. Similarly, here, we're talking about a church that wants to minister to the poor on their problem, not, not somebody else's problem. The First Amendment guarantees that, there's a right to minister to the poor, and it's also inherently beneficial to use under zoning law, which towns can't legally stop unless there's a clear-
Mr. Chairman, how should I have to? But he's following the law. And I don't know if he's following the law right or wrong. And he shouldn't be giving you the law.
You don't have to be right or wrong in some-
Mr. Wild, Mr. Wild, give me a second. Mr. Chairman, everyone has a right to make your public comment, whether you're an attorney or anybody. So maybe his comments as a member of the public, you can do whatever you want. Please proceed.
So that's the wrong way and the hard way, and it has never worked anywhere from the north of the state to the south. And I've worked with municipalities throughout the state. The right way is when I worked with your mayor, Dan Roddick, who was ready to force people out of town, put them in jail. I brought him there and saw the people I represented. Senior citizens, people on oxygen, people indistinguishable from the seniors and others who work back there, people who didn't have enough social security to make a rent. And we decided that it's better to help people that try to block help for people. And we were able, through an agreement, to solve homelessness the only way you can, and that's through housing. So you get them housing. If you try to block indoor housing- If you try to block indoor housing, you're gonna have people outdoors urinating. You're gonna have people endangering kids potentially. Uh, if they happen to be dangerous, and if they are, by the way, the police should just arrest them. But what we're talking about is a very clear choice between what's legal, what's illegal, what's right, what's wrong. And I would urge you, rather than embark on a multi-year journey and legalities, wasting taxpayer funds, that you let the church do what a church is entitled by. For that we've gotten a safe way. If I'm a dad, public safety is absolutely important and force the law. But if you don't make your life point right, the citizens will suffer.
That's enough.
And they'll, they'll be a family all the time.
I'll also ask that the remaining members of the public please silence your cell phones, so we have a clean record. Uh, we'll take the next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rachel, please. P-E-M-C-E. Longbridge. Alright, hi everyone, um, thank you for hearing me out today. And also hello to everyone gathered in the audience. I am here in a couple of different capacities. One, I grew up in Bricktown. I spent a lot of time in Tom's River growing up. My cousins lived here. I went to the first Baptist church to their PDS all the time. Um, vacation Bible school, if you're going with this. Secondly, I am a survivor of domestic violence. I'm a single mom and a small business owner. And I thought that it might be helpful for everyone who's gathered here today to understand something that I think is a universal truth that a lot of people don't understand. Um, sixty-five percent of Americans are currently living paycheck to paycheck. That's two in three people, okay? And so, a lot of people, I've heard expressing fear around the homeless. Um, and I get it. It's uncomfortable to look upon what we're all that close to. Any single one of us that loses a job could be in an abusive relationship like I was and could find themselves suddenly in a situation they could never have been able to drink of. Okay? When I left my home with my two-year-old, I had no plan. I had the clothes on my back, a spare diaper, and my phone. That's it. And I came back to our Jersey Shore where I was born and raised to be close to my mom so that I would have help and support. But when I left, I didn't have a house lined up. And I had just started my small business two months before. And what a lot of people don't know is that you have to have two years of taxes as a small business owner before people run to you. And so, my son and I, my two-year-old and I, fleeing from domestic violence, slept on the couches of our friends in Red Bank and Bricktown. And my sister was out in, I don't know, East, you know what, New Jersey. Um, anyway, long story short, I was eventually able to find housing after two to three weeks because both my brother and sister had stable, good-paying W-2 jobs and were co-parentors for me to get a home. If I had not had that system of support, I would have found myself also without a home with a small child. Not as someone who's dangerous, not as someone who's mentally ill, not as someone who's addicted to anything, not as someone that you and your family need to be afraid of. Now, I do understand these concerns. I myself have come to the Tom's River Library Committee. I've spoken to some of the people here. Again, they're people who are not housed. Everyone keeps referring to them as homeless. And that dehumanizes these people. They are people. One woman I spoke to was telling me about her children, and we were reminiscing on the joys of parenthood and also the trials and tribulations. And another woman was telling me she had also escaped domestic violence and that she was still running years younger because her ex-partner would find her locations and harass her and call the cops on her and her daughter to find out where they were. Okay? So, I'm just gonna turn around and speak to all of you, like, understand. Am I not allowed to do that? Okay, that's fine, no problem. Anyway, I hear everyone's concerns. I hear you saying, oh, it might make our property values go down. Actually, what could be making our property values go down currently is all of the hubbub and media attention around this and drawing attention to the issue. When if you guys proposed a solution and adopted the solution, and people were no longer peeing on sidewalks or assaulting journalists, and they had somewhere to go to get resources and help, you might solve the problem, you might serve as an example of what could be done. And yes, I recognize seventeen beds is not gonna fix the fact that there are over five hundred homeless people in Ocean County, and they don't have a place to go. And I hear you saying, well, what if they're, what if we make it a magnet and everybody comes here? Well, actually, what if you make an example and every other municipality in Ocean County also implements a thirteen, or fourteen, or seventeen bed shelter? So, yeah. Furthermore, I have heard a suggestion composed by someone here today, which was, not in Miami neighborhood, you know, go put it in a commercial district. Well, it's housing, so it should be in a residential district. It's somewhere where people lay their heads at things where they have nowhere else to go. I'm probably running out of time, but I wanna say one more thing. Okay? And that is, uh, someone suggested, well, let's just have a county shelter instead. Okay, let us do that. Let us have the seventeen-bed ones in every single municipality, and then let's get a county shelter. And let me tell everyone here, the county commissioner, you can walk there in three to five minutes. I was there yesterday for the county commissioner hearing. And I spoke to all five of the Republican county commissioners. I consider myself an independent, but I often vote democratically. They were all open to what I had to say, and you could vote next week. When they add events to their agenda, then you could all say, hey, can you guys put together a resolution for a county shelter? Can we add it to the budget for twenty twenty-six? There are solutions, and instead of taking this as an either-or, a yes or no, I hear people saying, you wanna help, let's find ways to help.
I, I go to that church daily. Um, and I tell you that my experience with that church are the services are impeccable. If they are allowing the services that it takes, it takes, uh, you have less, less probability of homelessness because you're getting people the ser, getting people the services they need. Instead of meandering around the streets of the city, you have to set us up. They, they will not be urinating on the street. They'll be using facilities. They'll be sleeping in beds. They'll be sleeping in the United Home Studios. You have less of a chance that they will be in contact with children because they'll have a place to go. I worked in two thousand eight, I worked in the Ozenon County Shelter in Mills, Sex County. Obviously, that's not, you know, those people stay on the grounds for the most part. They didn't really go out unless it was assorted at, or cigarettes or whatever it is. But they stayed locally, and it's, and it's a ground that's about the same size of the church now. We're not talking about in a suburb like Weatherly or something like that. We're talking about on Poppy Hill, right now, that church is set back. It's blocked by other, other buildings. It's, it's not completely out of the way. However, it is pretty much in a secluded area where you're...
That's not true.
Actually, it is. Actually, it is here, you know why? Because it's on a road, it's not in a, in a development area. They're gonna be here no matter what. So you might as well be on the place that's to sleep and eat and, and services made to better themselves so they get out of the predicament, and you have less people meandering around the streets.
From Cologne, Ada Lake, Conifer Street, Tom's River, New Jersey. C-O-L-O-N. I did. I am a resident at Ocean's Harbor House. On paper, I am homeless, and it is a homeless residential program for people sixteen to twenty-one years old. I was on and off homeless from seventeen until now. And I've had to go to shelters in New York City and Housstation Manhattan and Atlantic City, right near Harbor Rock Casino. I know it's like to feel unsafe in those places when I was house hopping before I was able to get to those shelters. And a lot of the time, when I contacted social services for Ocean County, I was told either to go to the churches to see if they had something, or to call two-one-one. Whenever I called two-one-one, they would either give me resources that I just did not qualify for, either because I was not a mom, a mom-to-be expecting, or I was just not in the age range that they were looking for. I was born in New York City, but I was raised in New Jersey, in Asbury Park, Belmore, and then Brick for nine years. It would have helped a lot to have a shelter in Ocean County where I was about to be a college student, but I couldn't because of the housing situation. Sorry. Now, when I went back to college, I gave my family another chance, but I ended up keeping homeless. Luckily, I had a friend down in Anaheim that I could look with. And thanks to Ocean's Harbor House, because of my age, I was able to find the stability I needed to be a full-time student and a full-time worker for a local elementary school. I'm only twenty years old, and if I was profiled in such a way that our current residents do, I would not have the opportunity to go to school, do what I'm doing well, and help our future generations learn kindness and respect and be tolerable to people around us. Sorry. I feel like this shelter would help, especially because it's close enough to the upper half of the town where you can do public transportation, which is what I rely on daily. And it would show that, you know, the values of people's lives can be over the value of the homes of the homeowners of Tom's River. Thank you for having me, Steve.
I do. Uh, I lived in this downtown section of Tom's River for a long time. I've lived in Tom's River for over sixty years. I raised my four children in the downtown, in the downtown village. Two of my children's families and six of my nine grandchildren live downtown within four hundred feet and eighteen hundred feet of the Crow's Facility. This is not an issue about compassion for homeless people, but it's about what is permitted by this town's zoning regulations. The zoning regulations are in place so residents know what they can expect their neighborhoods to be like. Single-family residential zones differ from rural, multifamily, commercial, industrial, etc. These regulations give property owners the comfort of what will build out in their neighborhood. The applicant is proposing seventeen-bed homeless shelter in an R-150 residential zone. According to R-A-R-H Associate's View Letter of June second, twenty twenty-four, they state that homeless shelters are not permitted in an R-150 zone. Therefore, the applicant required to be one use variance. This application, applicant has requested and was granted seven non-conformities or variances previously. According to our zoning laws, the applicant must demonstrate to the board that they satisfy both positive, which is peculiar exceptional difficulties or hardship, and negative, without the term of the public good criteria. Both positive and negative criteria must be satisfied for the board to grant a relief. In addition, the applicant must demonstrate that the site is particularly well-suited for reviews proposed. I don't think that the applicant has demonstrated that meets any of the above required criteria, and the variance should be denied. This proposed project is a homeless hotel in a residential zone, and it will negatively impact the values and quality of life in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Amanda Barton, seventeen, Magnolia, Tom's River. I came to the original meeting about this matter many months ago because as someone who grew up volunteering as a student in a program's life in a big hospitality, I wanted to know if what was being proposed in my immediate neighborhood was actually something to be a landmark. My number one concern is my children living on the street next to the shelter. And if we feel safe for them to continue riding their bikes to friends' houses, downtown, to the library, etc., I wanted to know what to expect. I ended up coming to every single meeting and asked questions at most of them. I filled a notebook of notes and information, questions, and what I was left with was a clear view that, of course, homeless services in shelter in Ocean County are definitely needed. But I do not feel that this location is correct. In the first meeting, Randy Moore told us that the day program at the church has been in operation for about two years and that no one living nearby was affected or aware. That's a bold statement for someone who didn't bother to ask anyone who lives nearby. Increasingly, over recent years, we've experienced a noticeable increase in homeless people in our neighborhood, specifically walking to and from the church to library. The fact that there will be no drug testing and no mental health screening by licensed professionals is what deeply concerns me. We were told that there would be curfew hours and rules, but when we asked for specifics, we were told by Ms. Moore that if this passed, they would develop them. That felt very evasive. However, what ended up feeling outright dishonest was when we were told that the shelter would be open from five P.M. to seven A.M. There would be no one walking around in the neighborhood because anyone with out-plans would go right to their day program. Many meetings later, a volunteer for the program gave the honest answer that the day program is closed until nine A.M. and lunchtime. So from seven to nine A.M., Monday through Friday, there will be two hours where some people at the shelter will have, not have anywhere to go, but to wait for the day center to open. And as we were told, the plan for some would be to go to the library for the day. For those who aren't aware, the bus stop for intermediate south is Washington and Magnolia, between the church and the library, right in the middle of that path. The bus picks the children up between eight and eight fifteen. The bus picks up Washington Street Elementary students exactly when people, or sorry, between around eight forty, exactly when people will have that break of time to mill around and head to the library. Even without this shelter, my twelve-year-old daughter has been approached on more than one occasion by homeless people while waiting for the bus. Once, a person who was talking to herself came up close to her. She felt concerned, but the next time, a man came right into her face, and she was freaked out going to school and wasn't able to tell me about it until she got home. Families on our street have to now take turns calling your grandparents when needed to make sure that the younger ones at this stop don't have any issues like that, and we provide a car for them to send in until the bus comes. This has been a bus stop for years, and we have never had this issue until the last year and a half. And the rates need to be increased. This doesn't even account for the weekends when the day center will be closed. Where will shelter residents go between the hours of eight A.M. and five P.M.? While there's clearly a need for homeless shelter, I can't imagine why one has to be dropped in the middle of a residential neighborhood filled with children, especially one that's a walking zone for local schools. Ms. Moore also testified to the fact that there were only seventeen beds in the spring. She said when it was full, they were notified of shelters, but there was no room. But she did acknowledge that if any people, an excess of people, came to the location because they knew of the shelter, rather than go inside, if they chose to sleep in their cars in the parking lot, that would be left up to the discretion of the church. The concerned people posed of a Magnolia tent that were countered by the fact that there were only seventeen beds didn't take into account that many can come and be allowed to stay on the grounds, and they won't be supervised or screened. As the pastor from the Holy Cross Lutheran Church testified, the church, their church would be involved in the shelter as well. I believe Ms. Formolan suggested that that church, which is currently undergoing destruction, would be a viable option, as it's already zoned in a business district rather than a R-150. There were countless other better options that would... There were countless other better options that would not require the same zoning changes and the precedence that this would set. Finally, last meeting, the first item on the agenda was a shed that was too close to the property line. It was tabled because a shed twenty feet too close to the property line warrants a visit to determine if it would affect the entirety of the neighborhood. I'm wondering if the board has made the same visit to see the proposed project nine feet from the property of Ms. Leota. And if that isn't disqualified from his zoning perspective, honestly, I don't provide him with zoning laws.
Thanks for the opportunity, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to volunteer with the Tom's River Housing and Homeless Coalition. Before that, I've been a resident here in Tom's River for forty years. And I am very proud to be title Chief Librarian for our Ocean County Library System. I worked here for forty years at the Library System, all the way up. And I am so proud of the fact that our library, especially the Tom's River Library, is an open and welcoming environment, as are all of our twenty-three library rooms of our Ocean County. I was distressed when I came down here to Ocean County from Bergen to find out that, yeah, there are no homeless shelters. Well, it wasn't a matter of concern for me at that particular time. But I got involved and I volunteered with Homes for All and Destiny's Bridge. I had candles and I had sleeping bags. And I will tell you, when they were putting up and wanting to do the Harbor House, I was very much upset because my kids played baseball on that field on Wednesday morning. And I said, "Oh, no, I don't like that going on." Until my own children came home from school and told me about the kids that they were going to school with that were kicked out of their homes and were dumpstered out and going into school without the right clothing and stuff, et cetera. Changed my mind. And I went over to Harbor House to find out what was going on there. That was when it really started to become very active, not only with youth that are homeless, but with our whole community. And I wanted to tell you, it's a very rewarding experience. And I get, I get that some people will say, "Not in my backyard. Find another spot. Do something else." But as someone else had said and shared with you and heard before, make a change. Do it now. This is your time. You have to. We all have to be brave. We all have to be brave because it's scary. It's scary to take that first step, very frightening. And we celebrated with the county commissioners when they finally, finally approved the trust fund. That was a long, hard fight. And I went out on a limb because I was a county clerk. And I wasn't supposed to go down there and talk to those commissioners as an individual because I worked for the county at that time. But it was hard, but you have to speak up and you have to take a stand. I had this personal statement. Yesterday morning, I volunteered for only two hours over at the Resource Center because that's what I do. I volunteer when I can. I'm a master volunteer. During that two-hour period from ten until noon, I had five phone calls. Nobody came to the door, but I had five phone calls, every one of them, every one, each one. I don't have a place to live. I need a place to live tonight. One call, it was for two people, herself and her husband. "We don't have a shelter. We're in our car. Is there something?" My job, because we are not a shelter and we don't have a shelter here in Ocean County, as you well know. Was to pick up a phone and refer them to just leave, to head core. Another family, it was a family that didn't have a place to live. Yesterday was a miserable, rainy, cold, and dusty day. They needed a place to live. Call Family Promise. Get them temporarily housed. And I will be the first to admit, I thought that the person who gave testimony on behalf of our Housing Alliance, the group that actually takes care of things at the Resource Center and does the screening, I thought that was a very big purpose because I had questions for her. There were questions I had in my poor day. She really didn't answer them properly. I really felt that way. And I still feel that way because there was a lot of misinformation, getting the impression that those people that will come for housing will not be vetted. And yes, they will. And the people who will be staying overnight are not vetted and are not sound employees and do not have clean records themselves. Yes, they will. Yes, they will. And it's not going to be a deep problem anymore. Thank you very much.
Debbie Fura, M.U.A. at Elementary Street, Joyce Street in Tom's River. Someone just recently asked, oh, sorry. Someone just recently asked, "Why do we have zoning laws or zoning regulations?" One of the things that we've established here tonight very, very clearly is we have a homeless problem in Tom's River of Tom's River people. And we do not have anywhere in our current zoning situation for both people, our people, our neighbors, our families, our friends, to go when there is a problem. That is what this church has come to you and asked for, to allow them to provide a service in our community, obvious needs. I have lived in the Silverton section of Tom's River for twenty-six years. I raised two children there. One's twenty-eight, one is thirty. When I was living, when I was raising my children in Silverton, we had a homeless person by the name of Billy Clayton. And Billy Clayton would ride his bicycle up and down Silver Bay Road. And the only first thing to know him was because my children were told about him in school and to be careful. And instead, I took my children to meet Billy Clayton. And I said, "This is Jesus. He is the least of us. This is who you need to be taking care of in the world." And that's how I raised my children, and I taught them to always ask Billy how he's doing, what's going on, what does he need. That is our responsibility as people living in a community. Two years ago, I have a bench outside my house. My kids, as I said, are raised, but I have a bench outside my house for the school bus. Two years ago, in the middle of the summer, a homeless man moved onto that bench here in Silverton on Silver Bay Road, just decided to live there. It took us a while to find him resources for somewhere else to go because we do not have a shelter. We need a shelter. We can't say, "Oh, not in my backyard" because it's going to be everyone in Tom's River is not in my backyard. You have people who have stepped up and said, "We want to do this important work." Please listen to them. Please understand, these are Tom's River people who need help. These are the people you are here to support. I greatly appreciate it if you would pass this this evening. If you're talking about safety, remember, we've all talked about safety of our children. What about the safety of our poor people living and urinating on our streets because we can't help them? Thank you.
Joanne Nguyen, 58, Seabreeze Road, Tom's River. G.W.I.M. I've been a member of Christ Episcopal Church for over fifty-five years, of which I spent at least twenty-five years serving on the board. I've been involved with JBJ Soul Kitchen for nine years and my current position as community coordinator for the last five. I also serve on the board of the Catholic Conference of the Northern Shore. I share this information so you know my savings comes from this knowledge and experience working with the housing and food and security members of our community. Christ Church was one of the first churches in Tom's River to welcome homeless families to stick on our church. Over twenty-five years ago under Intervene Hospitality Network, we continue that work today with Family Promise. I was part of the committee that started Christ Church Community Cafe fourteen years ago. Every month, we prepare and serve a sit-down monthly meal to those of us who are both have shut down our sit-down meal, but my husband and I continue to serve that meal each month as a takeout from April 2020 to December 2024. All the people who served over those fourteen years were from Tom's River, and many of them are homeless, living on the same streets we're talking about today. So this is not the main problem. We are addressing a problem that has been right here in downtown Tom's River, on Washington Street, on the property of Christ Church and the surrounding neighborhood for over twenty years. I want to give a personal perspective on the need for this transitional shelter and the people who we'd be helping. These are people I've gotten to know over the last two years. First, there's Mary. Mary is seventy-five. She's been a victim of aggressive violence as a married daughter and grandchild. Mary lost her apartment after her rent increased beyond what she could afford after COVID. She cannot move in and her daughter as there was friction between her and her son-in-law. And Mary won't come between them. Mary's been living in her car, unable to obtain housing. Mary is the sweetest woman. She would give you a shirt off her back and would do anything to help anyone. She's such a positive attitude and so grateful for any help she has given or kindness shown to her. She has cried several times in my arms, saying, "If it wasn't for what we do as Soul Kitchen," she doesn't know where she would be. She feels safe and loved when she's with us. Then she leaves to sleep in her car on a parking lot. She tells me how she keeps herself safe during the night, always aware of her surroundings. I pray for Mary's safety every day. Then there's Nancy and Jane, two sisters in their forties. Jane is a mental challenge. Nancy takes care of her. Nancy works at Walmart but was unable to afford a place to live, so they lived in her car. Nancy and Jane were connected with AHA at the beginning of their homeless journey, and after eighteen months, they were finally housed in a car. During their homeless period, I saw them several turns a week. Each one always greeted me with a smile, asked me how she could help, and thanked me for providing them with a meal. They became part of our community. Nancy would always say, "She just needs to take care of her sissy Jane." The day they came in to tell me they found housing, I wish I could have taken a picture of their faces. They were so excited. We hugged. I gave them a set of dishes for their new apartment. They were finally going to have a home, but it took me eighteen months. And then lastly, there's Vivian and her brainy Skylar. Vivian took custody of Skylar two years ago when Skylar's mother was found unfit to care for her due to mental illness. Vivian had a business on estate but had to give it up for Skylar here in New Jersey. Since taking custody of Skylar, Vivian has been working with every estate agency to get financial assistance and have been met with roadblocks every step of the way. Things came to a head several months ago when the woman they were living with informed them that she needed to relocate out of estate. This is going to leave Vivian and Skylar homeless. I connected them with AHA and Family Promise. Family Promise was able to get them into the program. Between the two agencies, Vivian and Skylar now have a home. If these programs weren't available, Vivian and Skylar would have been out on the street due to life events that were out of their control. If you were to run into any of these women on any given day on the street, you would have had no idea they were homeless or what they were going through. They don't look or act any different than you or me. They could be your mother, your sister, or your friend. They are harmless. More importantly, they are human. I ask you to just take a minute and imagine yourself in that situation, suddenly facing homeless students, unplanned life event. You suddenly find yourself living on the street in a car in the cold of the winter, the heat of the summer, anytime. No bathroom, no shower, no food, and nowhere to turn because there's no shelter available. This is what our housing and community in Tom's River thinks every day. So let's see everybody thank God.
Lori Singer, L.A.U.R.I.E.S.I.N.G.R., 113 Barfield, Tom's River. Good evening. I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Lori Singer. I'm the Director of Services for the Tom's River Housing and Homeless Coalition. But first and foremost, I'm a resident of Tom's River and a homeowner and taxpayer, a voter. And so what I say, I'm not saying under the umbrella of the Coalition or of the church or of AHA. I've been working with the Coalition and AHA doing this work for about two and a half years, almost three years. And it's changed my life. I get to work with love and compassion. I'm working through people's issues that they have due to discrimination and sometimes situations that are outside of their control. I just want this town and everyone behind me and everyone in front of me to understand that I love Tom's River. I love this area. I love this neighborhood. My commute is very short. I've actually ridden my bike here because I live not too far away, not two and a half miles away. And when I come over that hill on Washington Street and I pass the golf course and I see all the beautiful houses in the neighborhood in this area, I love it here. And I think everyone should have access to seeing such beauty. I love the parish house. It's been there for a hundred twenty-six years. The Christ Episcopal Church, the original church, was built in the 1880s. And that property's been there for a hundred sixty years. And the work of serving folks in the community that had fallen apart in hard times has been going on for that many years. I'm just one in many in the line that have been serving the community and making this town a beautiful town. And everybody, myself included, and the agencies I work for and the organizations I'm affiliated with wants safety and beauty for all. We want a safe neighborhood. We want everyone to feel safe. And as long as I'm, you know, sitting in the seat at that front, right by that front door there, it's my duty and my promise to keep that as safe as possible. So for any neighbors that are curious about what we do there, who are possibly led by fear, we fear what we don't know. We make assumptions about people that we don't know. I'm just asking you, come by, knock on the door, come see what we do, and see the service that we give. Come see that we're lifting people up, providing them houses, giving them services that they need. We're creating a safer environment for your neighborhood. I love this neighborhood. I love your neighborhood. If you go, have beautiful homes, and I want to keep it that way. I live here, too. I'm a resident of this town, and I want you all to feel safe, too. Thank you.
Yes, Mary. So, guys, I agree with both parties. Seventeen bed is better than not, but at the same time, there's better location in that town. And we need to unite ourselves, you guys, everyone behind me in the county, because you guys could prolong it, you guys could waste money and time that we will not get back at all, and it probably still won't be there. Guess what? 925 on 166th Park Motel is empty. It's been empty for a long time. It has enough bed that we could double, instead of seventeen bed, we could double the amount of bed that we put in there. I could get construction, guys, and one is going to be a lot of the time. I guarantee that for that. So I believe that you guys should all sit at the table and let's get this going. We could be the first in the county to make an example and the first in the county to come together, get a property, and guess what? We could utilize the church for a secondary service, but we could utilize 925 to house everyone in there. We could house females, males, and family. Because I have donated my time for some of the organizations, I have played with little kids. I have played and seen how beautiful I have played in seeing how beautiful and innocent they are, not knowing the struggle that their mom and dad are going through. So, guys, let's stop wasting time, and this is not the right location, because if we cannot come together, guess what? Let's come together, nine twenty-five, we can take that over, and it's still far enough and close enough for all the services to work out, to work with the church, work with the downtown, and all the other services. So, stop playing around, let's sit down, negotiate, because everybody in this room, I love the beautiful heart that everyone has in here, because you guys are standing for something that is very, very unique. I've been there. I go to all these parks, and I eat with these guys. I like spending my time, because someone is educating me. So, guys, please, let's stop wasting time. The counties want it to work with us, you guys want it to work, they want it to work. So, we need to unite all this, keep this a little cleaner. The beds over there, we could have about forty beds, double, and then we could have the services at the church. So everyone will win. But it's up to you guys, what you guys want to do. But remember, God is great, and God is watching, and here we are.
Hopefully, I won't fall over, I won't leave a lobe. My name is Joy Holman. I cannot give my exact address if someone is coming from an agency, not one of my unhoused friends, I want to make that very clear. I'm an advocate for the unhoused. However, if there's someone from an agency in this room who's threatened me, and I would like to keep my exact address. I'm just wanting to make that clear, because I do, and this injury is not from any of my unhoused friends. I want to make that clear, but it's my own clumsy self.
Do you swear from a testament? Do you swear before the board of the church of the whole church?
Yes, I do. These people are my friends, and I have friends on both sides of this island. And I am a strong advocate, I've been doing this for forty years, first in Mercer County before Homefront was even up. And I'm sorry, I've had an individual right now laying in community medical center. He was hit. He's an unhoused individual with a hidden tent. He was hit on his way to work. He rides a bicycle forty minutes to work. He was hit by someone. He's undergone two surgeries in the past week. I have been by his side. He has no medical insurance. I had to get an attorney involved. That is just one case that I'm talking about. But, that being said, I have also been a part of Destiny's Bridge, working very closely with Minister Ski, walking into the camp every single day, two miles in, two miles out, only driving in in emergencies, which my car, I thought made it. There are not enough beds. In a seventeen bed, it is a recipe for disaster. And I am sorry, these people are my friends, and if I had a big enough house, I'd be running a shelter for them, with security, with mental health services, and right now, my biggest heartache is for the elderly. I am working with more elderly, including the ones that came out of the camp that have not been housed yet, contrary to what's been told to the public. I minister to these people on a daily basis. I have done funerals. I will be performing my first wedding soon for unhoused individuals, and that will be a joyous day for me, because I've done too many funerals. I speak from my heart. I have listened to the residents on this side. I have been over to the Coalition. That door is kept locked. You have to ring the doorbell, and I can't tell you how many times we rang the doorbell, even with an appointment, and knocked that man, because there's a sign. So, I don't want to cut myself short, because I have some other points, but we have elderly. Can you imagine, eighty-two years old, a college professor, an author of seven books? Thankfully, I've got our house very quickly. We are all one step away, myself included, with two young children. I'm speaking from experience. I was one step away. We also have mental health crisis. We have a substance abuse crisis, but we also have an agency crisis where people are taking grants and the money that are out there for these unhoused friends of mine. And I call them friends, you can ask, most of them know me by name, or they call me Mom Joy. And I'm honored to be called Mom Joy by people who are of age. Most people would be insulted. But the mental health issues and the dual diagnosis, we can't just put virus out. We need a shelter that can encompass and give services like is done in Mercer County with Homefront. Look it up if you haven't, I don't have time to get into all the programs. And my kids volunteer as babysitters alongside of me before we moved down here on November four, seven, eight. And the homeless corruption, and I am sorry, that's why I do this on my own, I am not associated with any agency, any agency, and I want to make that clear. I have worked with Minister Ski alongside of him, and with Destiny's Bridge, and he's the real employer. But when that camp back closes down, all you're doing is perpetuating the cycle of homelessness. And seventeen beds, I'm sorry, mixing men and women in a seventeen, I'm sorry. Anyhow.
Laurie Bartels, three oh four one, Pito, Tom's River. B-A-R, T-P-R.
Do you swear from a testament? Do you swear before the board of the church of the whole church?
Good evening. I am Tom's River resident over thirty years. I feel that the homeless shelter in a residential neighborhood is not the best scenario. I feel it, the way it's on property, it's in a restricted environment, these homeless residents are really going to be in tight quarters, limited availability for access to the shelter. I also feel that there's other options out there that would be more suitable, like in a commercial business zone, that a building that would accommodate more beds would give the residents more their own autonomy, that they could have a little bit more with maybe having the transportation of the Ocean R plus available, that they would be able to have that, their own self-confidence, that they are going to a shelter, that they could have a bed where they're not going to be constricted in a restricted environment. Also, like, we're planning a shelter. This is going to be the first time a shelter is being introduced in Ocean County, an overnight shelter. I mean, there's a lot of planning that has to be done. I don't think a lot of things have been taken into consideration, like safety. Well, we all mentioned safety multiple times, but safety is a big issue. We all want to focus on the positives, but there's also the what-ifs. What if, there are, it's clearly evidence that residents, some of the homeless residents have mental health issues, they don't take their medications, they don't follow up with their psychiatric counseling, they don't follow up with their medical follow-ups either. They need to have a more controlled environment where they're going to have the social services onsite. They'll also provide security onsite, too, to protect everybody in the building. And also, to have onsite crisis workers, because sometimes, as I said, people don't take their medications, they can get agitated in a constricted environment. That's where we're going to be using tests and Tomter police to map, to control issues that, and this is not going to be a positive outcome for a shelter. That's why I feel they need to think about having a shelter in a commercial zone, they'll probably have more beds. And also, we all have to think about Monmouth County. AHA has a homeless shelter in a non-residential area. It's near the Port Monmouth Oceanport, and it's very successful. Also, Monmouth County has also partnered with Catholic charities. They have a transitional shelter on Route thirty-three in Eetown. It's a, it was a former hotel, and these residents have their own autonomy, they have their own rooms, their own kitchenettes, and it's not in a residential area, it's owned commercial, and it's a successful shelter. So, we have to take this all into consideration. Sometimes we have to think things out, make everything through before we make this just, and try to trial this, and then we're going to have all these problems, and people aren't going to be happy. So I think we all have to come together and compromise and do the right thing for everybody, homeless residents, the residents of Tom's River, the children, to make everybody, to make it a success. And it'll definitely make a positive outcome for Ocean County if we can do that. Thank you.
I live off Washington Street, on the street right next to the church, and from there for five years. Prior to that, I lived in downtown Manhattan for one and twenty-five years. Every neighborhood there has a relatively high level of cultural and socioeconomic diversity, without exaggeration. As an average-income person, you might live next to a homeless community, but also have to climb around unhoused people sleeping on the front steps of your building. On any given day, you will encounter any number of homeless people on any street, in front of any residential, any business or transit station. Even in that environment, where homeless next to you is so tragically normalized, it's common knowledge that lots with shelters, what we used to call welfare hotels, are less desirable places to live in language of the West. Realtors, buyers, sellers, landlords, and renters all know and accept that values of condos, co-ops, and rental units will be lower on a lot of the shelter. I didn't actually need to hear the expert witness say that our property values will be reduced considerably by fifteen percent if a homeless shelter opens and the provision proposed. I know what will happen, and I'm pretty sure a lot of us on both sides of the nation know that, too. When some people say seventeen bed for now, shelter, should pose no significant detriment to the community, well, they sound silly. Anyone who believes that the outreach business being run out of the church property isn't already popular with that purpose, well, they are getting themselves too. I'm angry. I've attended every one of these meetings for months, concerned about defending my property, my property that I previously had believed would have been protected by zoning ordinance. I chose a location and committed to paying a premium tax year, so I could live next to a church and a golf course in a neighborhood that felt like a Mayberry, not to be next to homeless services sector, and certainly not a shelter. Everything is relative, but I'm certainly not wealthy, and I have my own sad story. And I need every nickel of equity in my home, ultimately, to take care of myself. I know I'm not the only one in that situation. I have to add that I resent feeling manipulated and can't quite fathom why it matters that a church owns this property, or why the words Christianity or Jesus keep coming up in this room. This isn't, this is a land use application, and a municipal zoning word adjustment. It could be anyone making the same application, and the neighborhood would have the same objections. I can't believe that it needs to be said, but somehow I think it does. Anyone's religious beliefs are no one else's business. Finally, not wanting shelters to open in this location certainly does not equate to the neighborhood being against homeless shelters or any charitable or religious institution. We, the neighborhood, are people who directly and indirectly donate money, food, clothing, supplies, we fundraise, and we volunteer for homeless and homeless adjacent causes. Some of us have actually sheltered people who are homeless, too. We don't want the people who need help to not get it. We want them to get it. I personally hope that the county can work in partnership with the town to use the American Rescue Act funding along with its own trust money and build an appropriately scaled shelter to help those who need it. The responsibility lies with the county and, to some extent, the town. There certainly is enough property owned in the location that would not disrupt established residential neighborhoods. To wrap this up, I'll say that, like so many of my neighbors, I chose this place, I invested here and booked a life here because of the location and the kind of zoning it has. No homeless shelters, no gas stations, no drugstores, or government buildings on the border. I'm not going to speak to the other implications of grants in these areas, but to those of us who live here, it would feel like a betrayal by the town. My first questions to my adjutant friends will be, should I go to the county, the town, or specifically the zoning board for compensation for the fifteen to twenty percent loss in home value? And how quickly and by how much are they going to make sure our taxes are reduced? Thank you very much.
Marco Deja, V-A-G-E-A-C, seventy-three, Cryermore Drive. Do you swear from a testament? Do you swear before the board of the church of the whole church? Yes, I do. Hi, I've listened to many speakers before, who, although speaking from their heart, I believe obfuscate, confuse, cloud the issue at hand. The issue is not the benefit, it's not to decide upon the benefit of a homeless shelter. The issue is deciding on the appropriateness of the location of this homeless shelter. We, as the residents there, and I live within a ten-minute walk, frankly, I believe that if you can't walk to this place, then you really have no right to lecture us. So, we, the people that live in this community for dozens, ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, that pay thousands, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, I personally pay thirty-five thousand dollars a year in property taxes. How much does a twelve-acre church pay in property taxes? And if you don't pay that tax, who does? So, I refuse to be lectured to. Apparently, by the way, the other side now benefits from two very brilliant lawyers, both of which have managed to threaten the board and us, the citizens, with internal And I don't need to be lectured about the Great Depression, a time where none of us were alive in. So that is the issue at hand, and we are not here to denigrate the homeless population, God knows they have their problems, they're individuals, of course they are, and each has a story, and each has a role. But my responsibility is not to them. My responsibility is to my family, and my immediate neighbors, and my children. That is my responsibility, and you should all do the same. Take care of your own first, before you have the luxury to take care of someone else. And this way, you will not be a burden to somebody else. So that is my point. And the community, this community...
Sorry, just a second. Folks, it's been a long night. Please, the speaker with the same respect, he showed you all.
This community, I believe, has overwhelmingly spoken against us. The country club and the facilities have been, and the pool are merry for children that ride their bikes along Washington Street, especially themselves.
Last warning.
And again, without casting any astersions on the homeless population, we're not here to denigrate, but we're not here to lionize either. The, as individuals, each one is unique, but as a community, they have pathology, we all know that, can't deny that, it's there. And of course, something should be done. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. Jared Rock, Ninety-nine Dickinson Avenue, Tom River. Born and raised in Tom River, New Jersey. Oh, sorry. I do. I grew up at Six Magnolia Lane, this is where my parents live, right now. And I have three children, three young boys, Gory Jepikova. We all play in the backyard with Grandma and Pop Off House. And, you know, last Thanksgiving, first year, decided deep-fried turkey in the backyard. There's no fence to the church property, wide open there. You know, deep-fried turkey, an unhoused individual there, respectful, I guess. I felt bad, I had lights on, he slept there. You know, the next day, my children asked, like, what's this going on out here? Can we touch this stuff? I'm like, that's this guy's property. This is his life savings here, you can't touch it. Like, don't mess with it, it's going to be your fault if you go back there. And there's nothing to stop them from going back there, you know? I just worry about their safety. And it's, you know, it's been, it's been in our family for, you know, forty years. It's just, it's just crazy. And, you know, we walked back there to go sledding and everything. And we were building a snowman. And there's just clothes on the bushes and stuff. And I say, hey, you can't, can't touch that, that, you know, that could be someone's, like laundry or whatnot. Like, don't, don't touch anything, it's not, it's not your stuff, just leave it there. And it's just, you know, I, some of the other people in there, they didn't know homeless people existed. I, you know, I've been talking about it a lot, it was a very long time till we saw this. We, I don't agree with this stuff, shutting down the brickwood center and all the other things. There's clearly a need, but this is a residential area, this is an open backyard of people's houses. There's no, you know, fencing there or anything. It could be there, it's just, you know, something I'm just not in favor of. So, you know, I appreciate you guys' silence here, it's been a very long, long process. And, you know, it just, I hope you guys vote against this, you know, when you guys get to it. Appreciate your time, thanks.
I, I want to, I don't see why it can't get in a win situation. Why doesn't it have to be a win-lose situation? Why can't we pick somewhere, there's, you know, we're on the street, there's twelve and a half million dollars involved. What is going on in this neighborhood here? I haven't heard anything said about the amount of money, the funding, where all that is money from. There's certainly maybe a vested interest in to why it's on specific location. It's twelve and a half million dollars, that's true. We can set up whole, uh, places that we can bring in, right? I just want to say, there's some things that have been said, and most of the meetings here, I'm just hoping, but most of that, some things are pretty hard to understand. Maybe I can't, I'm not smart enough to be able to comprehend, but I would bring up one example for tonight. The lawyer from Surf said, he said, my father was homeless in the depression, he broke, put me through the hospital. There's something wrong there, you know, somewhere along the lines, the numbers don't work for me. There are a few other things that just made me scratch my head a little bit. One other person, these we've had, we were talking about the parameter, what is going to happen with this location? We're going to bring people in for thirty days, I've heard days are going to be on the feed, we're going to be back out there. We're only going to bring seventeen people in, and after eighteen, we're going to call 211. And our plan is, we go 211 and get somebody. We all need, everybody needs a handout, we're going to need a handout, we're going to need a pad in the back, and so on. And we all need help, we're all responsible for helping everybody, there's no doubt about that. But if we're going to be here for thirty days, and then you think that you're out and you're... I'm not going to pick on people, but the fact of the matter is, there were a couple of homeless people who come up here and spoke about it an hour ago. They were homeless a month ago, and they were homeless two months ago with these meetings. Where's that thirty days coming in? Where does that parameter come in? It's just another one that untruths or receptions that was vocalized. There really is a, a, a very, I couldn't figure it out. But, and then it said, okay, there's been no additional problems. I saw that letter, I'm a resident, I saw the letter from Robert, with the amount of actual police activity or bribery that we've had over the last couple of weeks. A lot of these things just, they might tug at your heartstrings, and they might reinforce you. One lady stood up here a little bit before and said, they're vetted, they're vetted, they're vetted. How do you know they're vetted? You don't even know who's hunting it yet, but she was adamant that they're vetted. They're vetted. I've got a buddy, I just want to, this is a little bit of a question. I've got a buddy, very good, correct? I want to get a group of, Martha Lippin Harrison, thirteen years old, she's murdered on November eleven.
See, she wants to be the bad guy, Mr. Gonzalez. We already did hear her. She called him the heavy, she was like, oh.
That's okay. I'm used to rejection.
Folks, it appears that we're at the end of the line. If there's any other speakers, I'd encourage you to make your comment now. We are going to close at ten o'clock. So if anybody else would like to speak now, we short time.
Sorry. My name is Heidi Shelly. I live at ten sixteen Old Green Place in Tom River, New Jersey. Way to tax care. I do. For my friend, Tom's River Ice Creams, in nineteen eighty-seven. Young woman who's just alluded to lived in our neighborhood. So I remember that case very well. I'm a member of Christchurch. The point I want to make here at the end is that there is no good place in Tom's River where a channel of businesses that does not back up to a neighborhood. Lutheran Church happens to be right across the street from Cooper Avenue, Badmont Tree, and it's immediately east. There is a large housing development slightly to the north of it, between that area, Ocean County College, as well as a neighborhood that is behind the circus center. And the houses that are in the back of that neighborhood are also in the upper nine hundred thousand to one million dollar range. So no matter where you go in Tom's River, somebody's going to tell you, not in my backyard. We need to do it, but not here. The young man who stood up and spoke about the hotel on one sixty-six, that's actually near my home, and I actually would not care if that hotel was used to serve people. But I don't know that my neighbors would feel the same way. So all we're doing is shifting this problem around to other residents who are also going to say they don't want it. And the county is going to want to build a shelter where the greater populations exist. They're going to be looking at Tom's River as a potential location. I understand the fears. We actually have, down the street from me, a halfway housing home for people who are coming out of rehab. It's been there for a number of years. My neighbors freaked out when originally they were putting it up. It's on Group one sixty-six, and there is a seat that people can take, you know, to get back and forth to where they might need to go. We've never had any trouble for many of those people. We haven't had our homes broken into, we haven't had any of our children molested by them, and we haven't had any death from our homes. I have rooms of neighborhood kids. They stole some of my husband's money from his car that was parked on the street. I have an Orthodox couple who lives next door to me right now, who had kids from our neighborhood shouting anti-Semitic slurs at them. They're neighborhood kids, our kids, here in Tom's River, who are misguided. Their parents own homes in my neighborhood. We can do better as Tom's River. I understand the fear. I think that once approval is given or not, we'll be able to help allay, relate the fears of people in the neighborhood so that they can properly understand how supervision will be provided, how people can come to the shelter, will be vetted. And the more shelters that we can get set up, and the more resources that we can get provided across the area, the more potential places there will be, instead of just one set in some dead location. We're not looking to set up a tent city. And in terms of children and their safety, I have two children who also graduated from Tom River schools. I have a grandchild, I totally understand. But in terms of molestation from strangers, and abuse from strangers, it's a relatively small percentage. It's not zero. It's between a ten to thirty percent chance, depending on where you live. But for any chance of somebody visiting or hurting people, or who you're friends with, potentially hurting, but for a child. That's statistics for childhoods and sex abuse. Ask me, I know, because it was me. So I do understand the fear. I'm hoping that we can come to an agreement where we can allay the neighbor's fears, work together, make it completely tangible, and hopefully we can serve our mission in return.
Patrick O'Dell. One-two-four-point-oh, it's Tom River. Yes. There's been a lot said tonight, a lot of emotional things said, a lot of emotions from people who live in the community, a lot of emotions from people who are just passionate about being advocates for the homeless. And I just want, my understanding is that this is a zoning issue exclusively. And I, while, you know, I can certainly feel compassion for a lot of the things that have been said, at the end of the day, as a person who lives in this community, the zoning laws are to protect our homes from unwanted use or unlawful use. And I think that, as many nice people came up here and said really nice things, I don't think that should be where we're making our decisions. I think it should be based on people who live in this community and their property's protection from unlawful use. You know, I'm not sure, I didn't fact-check, but one of the first speakers tonight, I believe, was Mrs. Thompson, said that there is not a single, in the entire state of New Jersey, zone that we are in that has done this. And I think it would be kind of foolish to be the first to do that. That's pretty much all I have to say, thanks.
I'd like to hear the speakers. Closing the closing public session. I have a motion to close the public portion, and a second, all in favor, all opposed. The second was from Mr. Moll. Mr. York. Okay. Melissa, June twelve? Folks, just so we're clear, we're getting closing statements from the applicant's council, as well as the council for the objectors. We also have the right to hear from the objectors previously represented by Mr. Gazarovski, as well as testimony from our planner. Understanding that the residents want a resolution to this problem, there's seven or eight people in front of you that are citizen volunteers, we're going to be in our time for tonight. So ten o'clock is a hard time for us.
And also, Mr. Chairman, to be fair, attorneys aren't usually very short-lived, so I'm sure it's true. Are going to have a lot to say, and certainly, Mr. Wise, our planner's going to have a lot to say to sum up the application. It's not going to be a ten-minute thing for anybody in the audience, so it could go off.
So with that, we will carry the application for closing statements from both sides of the council, as well as the board's professional planner. There will be no more public comment, this will be the only notice that you can give for the June twelfth meeting. Melissa, what else do we have on the night?
There's going to be other applications.
Okay. But the board will, will vote on June twelve on the application. Right? I mean... Folks, please, for our plea record, if we can chatter to the number of carry, because I obviously missed the next page. Folks, please. So, we anticipate a vote.
I would anticipate that those three applications are not taken over, it's more than an hour. With all due respect to Mr. Nance's comments, that's concerning, you know that in reality, I'm just pretty sick of him.
I've got to send Mr. York over first because it's important for beauty, and he said, no, I should go first.
So, in any event, your wagers on one session?
Yes.
So, folks, carried to June twelfth at six-thirty. Thank you for your time. Is there a motion for adjournments?
No.
All in favor?